So we're coming back from our special meeting that began at 4:00. And now we are closing that meeting.
I'll just report out that we completed the interviews that were scheduled for the city manager recruitment, and no other reportable action was taken. And so as the mayor indicated, we're adjourning that meeting.
Okay, so we adjourned the meeting. And now at this time, I would like to open, call to a meeting at 6:07. And this is a meeting of the city council. This is our joint meeting, the city council successor agency housing authority meeting. And this is our regular meeting of Wednesday, April 5th. And if we can get a vote call please.
Councilmember Carrera.
Pressing.
Councilmember Chavez here. Councilmember Corlejo.
Here.
Mayor Proten, minutes.
Here.
Mayor Velasco.
Here.
All of us.
Okay, perfect. So we will move on to our next item, which at this time is public comments on closed session items. So any member of the public may address the council on any closed session items that appeared today. And we do have one closed session item, which is the city council will recess to closed session to consider personnel matters, personnel to government closed session 54957, B1 city manager recruitment. We do have three minutes. Would you ask you to be to the point and then also state your name and your address for the record, please? So we don't have anyone in our chambers. Do we have anyone that is joining us via Zoom?
There are none.
Okay. So we will close our public comment for closed session items. And then we will move into our closed session and we will be back for our regular meeting at 6:30.
We have any additions or modifications to the agenda?
Okay.
They will move on to our public comments. So at this time, any member of the public can address the city council. I am not appearing on the agenda. You do have three minutes. And we will make sure when you come up to the podium to speak. If you can please state your name and your address. And then I'll first ask those that are joining us here at City Hall. And then I will take it out for those that are joining us today via Zoom. So any members of the public that are joining us here in our chambers want to make any public comments?
Yeah, don't worry.
Yeah, it's okay.
You're good.
My name is Leah. I'm a sophomore at Salted High School. And I've been a part of Century Center steps for nine months. In honor of Take Down Tobacco Day, which was April 1st, the Century said, the Century Center steps program would like to thank you for hearing our voices on the importance of adding flavored tobacco products to here on here in Salted. We feel this is a great start to protect youth just like me. Our next mission as a youth-led program is to further this protection by adding marijuana to the social host ordinance in the city. This obviously substance of use among youth is not only impacting their well-being, but also the environment. We would like to invite you to our park cleanup happening here in Salted, where our primary goal will be to pick up tobacco products at Bossy Park. This is our fire.
We have it here to share with everybody is welcome.
Thank you. We hope to see you there. The last thing we would like to ask of you is for everyone here tonight to join us by signing our pledge to be tobacco and vape free. Thank you.
Thank you, Leah. You did a great job.
Thank you, Leah. So we will have this up and available here wherever we would suggest for anyone to go ahead and take a pledge to be tobacco and vape free.
Thank you. So we'll make sure so this will stay at City Hall. We can put it somewhere here.
Absolutely.
Or just for today.
Absolutely. However, you would like to do.
We keep it at City Hall. And then we can make arrangements to pick it up for you.
Thank you. And then just a quick, so we can make sure that we tell our public, when is the cleanup?
Yes, we'll leave flyers out in front. The cleanup is on Tuesday, April 11th from 11:00 a.m. to 12:30 at Bossy Park. The Sun Street Center youth will be staying a little bit later in the afternoon to stay have some fun and have some lunch. So we're inviting the public and volunteers to join us for that hour and a half of the cleanup.
Yeah, thank you so much. So I know that we wanted to take a picture with the youth after we do our public comments. If you don't mind just saying, and then we'll have a photo with the council and the pledge, taking the pledge for any of the council members that want to do that. And I just want to say thank you to our step teams. I know they were really instrumental in our ordinance, our tobacco retail license ordinance that was adopted by the council last year. Yeah, so thank you so much for all of the work that you're all doing and great job again, Leah.
Well, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Kendra Howell, and I'm with the Blue Zones Project Monterey County. And just again echoing that, thank you for your support of that ordinance last year. We're actually aligning with the health of the country.
Again, as Councilmember Chavez said, we apologize, it took a little bit longer, but it was important business. And so I will now turn it over to our city attorney to do our report after closed session.
Yes, Mayor and Council, the closed session report is that the city council discussed issues related to the city manager recruitment and provided direction to the city attorney and the recruiter, and no other report of action mistake.
Okay, great. So at this time then, we'll move on to our pledge of allegiance, and we do have some special guests here with us in first step teams. So I can have them be just please in our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
Okay, so at this time, do we have any additions or modifications to the agenda? Okay, then we'll move on to our public comments. So at this time, any member of the public can address the city council. I am not appearing on the agenda. You do have three minutes. And we will make sure when you come up to the podium to speak, if you can please state your name and your, your address. And then I'll first ask those that are joining us here at City Hall, and then I will take it out for those that are joining us today via Zoom. So any members of the public that are joining us here in our chambers want to make any public comments?
My name is Leah. I'm a sophomore at Solid High School, and I've been a part of Century Center steps for nine months. In honor of Take Down Tobacco Day, which was April 1st, the Century said, the Century Center steps program would like to thank you for hearing our voices on the importance of adding flavored tobacco products to TRL here in Salda. We feel this is a great start to protect youth, just like me. Our next mission as a youth-led program is to further this protection by adding marijuana to the social host ordinance in the city. This obviously substance use among youth is not only impacting their well-being, but also the environment. We would like to invite you to our park cleanup happening here in Salda, where our primary goal will be to pick up tobacco products at Bossy Park. But this is our fire.
We have it here to share with everybody. It's welcome.
We hope to see you there. The last thing we would like to ask of you is for everyone here tonight to join us by signing our pledge to be tobacco and vape free. Thank you.
Thank you, Leah. You did a great job.
So we will have this up and available here wherever we would suggest for anyone to go ahead and take a pledge to be tobacco and vape free.
Thank you. So we'll make sure so this will stay at City Hall. We can put it somewhere here.
Absolutely.
Just for today.
No, absolutely. However you would like to do it.
We keep it at City Hall, and then we can make arrangements to pick it up for you.
Thank you. And then the just a quick, so we can, we can make sure that we tell our public, when is the cleanup?
Yes, we'll leave flyers out in front. The cleanup is on Tuesday, April 11th, from 11:00 AM to 12:30 at Bossy Park. The Sun Street Center youth will be staying a little bit later in the afternoon to stay have some fun and have some lunch. So we're inviting the public and volunteers to join us for that hour and a half of the cleanup.
Yeah, thank you so much. So I know that the, we wanted to take a picture with the youth after we do our public comments. If you don't mind just saying, and then we'll have a photo with the council and the pledge, taking the pledge for any of the council members that want to do that. And I just want to say thank you to our step teams. I know they were really instrumental in our ordinance, our tobacco retail license ordinance that was adopted by the council last year. Yeah. So thank you so much for all of the work that you're all doing and great job again, Leah.
Well, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Kendra Howell, and I'm with the Blue Zones Project Monterey County. And just again echoing that, thank you for your support of that ordinance last year. We're actually aligning with the health department and the, and the Sun Street Centers to really promote that, to encourage other jurisdictions to follow suit. So you've really been a leader in that effort. And again, we're very proud of our partnership with Sun Street and the steps students. We work across the county with all of the organizations. So we actually have a cleanup in Salinas and in Monterey also next week. So thank you very much for all that you do for the community.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so at this time, do we have any other members of the public that like to make a public comment? You can come up to the podium.
Good evening. Charolee, address is 803 Barcelonish Street. I have made couple of citizen complaints. Their dates would be October 19th, 2022, October 28th, 2022, March 16th, 2023, February 8th, 2023. And as of today, I have not received a written response to the citizen complaint forms that have been submitted. I'm asking to receive the policy and the process to the citizen complaint forms that were submitted. And also I am presenting a USB drive that contains additional information that supports its dividing. Thank you.
Thank you. If we can have some matches.
As you know, like people in the audience may know, under the law, the council can't react to the comments. But I think for information purposes, we can share, you asked about the process. So when a citizen files a citizen complaint form, then we reach out to that citizen to get information to investigate the complaint. And so we'll follow up and contact you to follow up with, and if you have additional information, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Up to our city manager. Thank you. Okay, any members, any other members of the public that are joining us here in our chambers who like to make any additional public comments?
It's my turn, huh?
You're going to do a presentation? You are on the agenda. Okay, no other comments? Okay, so then I will take it out to our public that's joining us via Zoom. Any members of the public that are joining us via Zoom that like to make a public comment? Okay, so I am seeing none. So then I will bring them back and I will close the public comment period. Thank you, everyone, for the public comments that were made today. And we'll, if, before we go on to our youth council, council, can we pause for a few minutes to make sure that we take a photo with our step teams? And then we'll continue with the agenda. Thank you again for your patience as we make sure that we acknowledge signed our pledge with our step teams. Thank you so much. So we will now move on to our next item on our agenda. I don't see our youth councils or youth council record. I don't see them here, nor do I see them on, on Zoom. So I'll. Okay, so we will move on, and then if they show, then we can come back to the report. So we move on to the next item on the agenda, which is council presentations. We have two today. And we will begin with the presentation by Solid Mission Recreation District regarding the completion of installation of the new starter blocks project. And here's where we have Mr. Pete Massa, who's gonna give us the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Valeskas, Steve Council. I'm Pete Massa, Chair of the Board of Directors for the Salda district. Coming to here today is to share a lot of things about the collaborative block project that we've done together. The blocks were received and installed in February of this year. We only have one final component, and that's the completion of a storage facility within the pool to extend the longevity of our investment. So this storage is going to hold some of the value blocks we're not going to use, I guess, some of the, some of the lanes, so that they're not, you know, they're not exposed to the sun or the elements. So we're almost done with that. They're working on it now. One good thing is after this is all said and done, the project is projected to come in just under 60,000 and under budget. So me being in the, in the fiscal sector, it's always nice to be under budget. So it turns out really well. Once, once we, we do the, we finish the actual storage facility, then they'll, they'll be issuing a balance, a staff issue, a new way for the balance remaining. And two years to go on with the swim team, who kind of started this whole project amongst all of us. They're taking full advantage by being able to practice on the diving blocks as needed. And for the first time in the history of Solid High School, we're going to host the very first Solid High School home swim team tomorrow at 3:30. So I'm sure you guys have been invited. Our executive director, some of you know Francis, is just hurrying on leave, attorney leave. So she pushed me in here and said, make sure you're in there, you're gonna hit all these points. So the main point is to make sure that if council could be there, we'd love for you to be there. We have the unveiling at 1:00 PM. After that, we'll have refreshments and tours. So if you haven't taken a tour of the pool, we'll give you the tour and you can see what it's all about. Not only is the council going to be there, we're inviting the council, we invited the school board of trustees and the Monterey County Arts Council. Let's see here. Besides that, I gotta express our appreciation and our, and our, and thank the council for coming together and partnering with us and making this project happen. I was able to sit down with some of the citizens during the meeting, and I saw how important it was to them to actually have these blocks and have this, this team meet that they were trying to get, you know, especially in the South County and having the facility, we're not having the capabilities to do it. It was a, it was a good, was a like extreme passion of the, I'm sure they stood before you guys as well. And now that it's happening, just to see the excitement that is generated within the swim team. And I don't know if you've ever been at a swim meet, but they're extremely excited. So, you know, they're shouting and things going on, and for us to be able to facilitate that, that has to do with you guys making the decision to partner up with us. So thank you on behalf of not only the Solid's rec district, but from a citizen of the city of Salda. And somebody who's swimming at that pool since the early eighties, you know, with a rolled up towel and a dollar to get in and be back then. So thank you for that. I hope to see you tomorrow at 1:00 PM to join us. And we did reserve, I think we reserved a spot for you guys to say some words, to talk about the collaboration. And if I can, you have any questions for me, I'll try to answer. If you have any right now, you can definitely answer them, but it's exciting. I'm really, really grateful, extremely grateful to the council, to the school board of trustees coming together. When you, when you do something like this, especially from, from, from a private city, from a citizen of Salda, this is huge. This is, this is really big, especially for high school, for students, and this gets talked about, you know, out there in the city. So thank you so much. Thank you for your time. Any questions?
Thank you, Pete. I think we probably don't have questions, but, but more comments, and I do see that we, I will take it out to public. Oh, there is a, well, I'll just make some comments. I want, no questions, but I just want to say we're all so equally excited to be able to have a swim meet for the first time here in Salida. So for many of us, you know, my, my, my son played was in the Sharks team many, many years ago. So I know how exciting that is, and obviously growing up, you know, going to the pool since, you know, since I can remember. So I think this is really important. And the same sentiments, I think, when we heard from, from the, the youth and the athletes, it was really important for this council to be able to look at how we can support them. And just for our public that, that may not know, but the use of the funds that were provided were under our ARPA dollars, which is the American Rescue Plan Act, and those came to the city because of the impacts of COVID-19. So what an amazing way to be able to provide those funds and utilize those funds for our youth and to be able to have these opportunities that they didn't have and really address some of those other impacts that we saw that came out of the pandemic, right? Especially with a lot of the mental health issues and a lot of the other isolation. And so this is a great opportunity in terms of the investment back into our youth and our families to be able to have that for the first time in Salda. I think we keep hearing that history is made in Salida, and we continue to make that history. So really excited that this council approved the use of those dollars to be able to collaborate with the Solid Mission Recreation and the school board as those joint efforts with the investment in our families and our youth. So we're excited. We're excited to be there tomorrow. I'll leave it up to, open it up to the comments from the council.
Yes, hi. Thank you for, for being here. And I just want to echo the same sentiments as the mayor's and those of yourself even, you know, being also a long time, long life, solid at resident. It really is exciting. I remember going to it before there was sidewalk, and it was just dirt. And we had to walk through the dirt from Palm Avenue. But I just wanted to say, you know, that this really is amazing when you think about it, because we have all these different organizations and entities, the city, the school district, which you mentioned, the rec center, you know, all working together. And just also wanted to acknowledge the Booster Club. You know, I was blessed to be a part, a part of the Booster Club. I know Carleen is in the Booster Club and as well. And, you know, again, it was a community, a community effort besides the parents and those entities who also had, and there was California gourmet pizza career who allows us to do the, allow us to do the meetings for the Booster Club, and that's where everything started. All these ideas came from, and also allows his base for fundraisers. I know our police, our police association, our police association, I believe they gave a thousand dollars. Also, Teresa, a nonprofit every, every year. And last year, it was the Swim Booster Club. So again, just want to thank everybody in the community, those people that have supported the fundraisers, that have donated stuff for the fundraisers. Just thank you. It's a great feeling to see, you know, just the collaboration that we have here in our town. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to echo what Mayor Tim and also Councilmember Corinna said. Again, I believe it was built in 76, 74. So I remember swimming in that pool in the seven.
64.
Yeah, it's 64. Great activities for the kids, and also it gives pride to those kids, well, to be able to have a home of it. For them to be on the road and still be successful. I goes, you know, kudos goes out to all the youth that were involved with that and as team members and the coaches and the families, or the groups. And, and kudos to the community for coming together and making this happen. So best of luck and look forward to that tomorrow.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Richa?
Yeah, I mean, I think for me to see, you know, the young women and the young men, particularly the women who won the, you know, the championship last year, to be the swimming team that has no swimming pool, I mean, in a way, and that's just amazing. So for me, I think what we were able to provide is just a tiny little thing. I mean, honestly, it's a tiny little thing. But tomorrow you'll see how big that tiny little thing is. So I think it's, it's extraordinary. I think so. I think this community comes together quite often on little things that end up being big things. Or so Pete, to your board, to Maria, and all the boosters and all of the parents that came to these meetings and went to your meetings, that went to the school board meetings, and all those kids that just were so passionate about this. You know, kudos to all of them, and we'll see you tomorrow.
Sounds good. We hope to.
Well, the only thing that is left is that it's a big thing that is going to start tomorrow. I can see great, great things coming out of that and from inspiring new swimmers, little kids that are, of course, have potential to do something. Because I remember when my niece was in the, in the team, she was very limited to what they could do. Now there's, we know the limitations and what they can do. So thank you so much for all the efforts and everything you guys do.
Thank you. I appreciate the comments. I really do. That's very inspiring. You know, you take this back to, to the board, and you take it back to all, especially you talking about the Booster Club, that sort of starts, starts up the people. Them coming together and asking for something, and then being able to put it together and see what's going to happen tomorrow. I really, really hope to see you guys.
Yeah, thank you. And please extend our congratulations to Francis. And we do have, so let me just open it up to the public. There's a comment. Let me take it out to Zoom first. So there is a comment. Samantha, do you want to unmute yourself? Samantha, can you hear me? Okay, it looks like she logged off. She disconnected. Okay. So thank you so much, Pete. Again, you know, it's really exciting to be able to be there tomorrow and joining the rest of our community in this massive win. So.
We're looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to our next item on the agenda and today it's a proclamation and celebration of the tenth anniversary of the Pinnacles National Monument. So this is really exciting for us and I have National Park, National Park. And so if we can, we have two of our park rangers that um if you guys can. Uh, please come up to the podium. So we wanna make sure that we have this special proclamation to be able to hand to. To both of you and this tenth anniversary of Pinnacles National Park. Uh, so the park, uh, Pinnacles, and I wanna read this because I think, you know, when I was reading the proclamation, uh. It was really exciting to know. I mean, I grew up going to the park since I was a little girl. Uh, so it's really exciting for our community to to hear some of the um, just some of the history. So Pinnacles National Park has a rich history of local supported initiatives. With local ranchers and residents playing a crucial role in the establishment and the development of the park. Since its establishment as a national monument in nineteen oh eight. To its designation as a national park in twenty thirteen. And we wanna also thank Congressman Sam Far for really spearheading those efforts. The support of Solid's locals has been instrumental in the success success of the park. Whereas the West Side of Pinnacles has been a particular focus of local initiatives. With all that residents playing a key role in development over the years. From the nineteen sixty-four meeting between the Solid Chamber of Commerce President. And the Park Services Chief of Planning. That helped spur the paving of the road from Solid to the West Side, which is so amazing for me to learn. To the twenty thirteen establishment of the West Side Visitors Contact Station, the support and enthusiasm of Solid's locals have helped to shape. The park for what it is now. Whereas Pinnacles National Park is a true wonder located in the Gableon Mountains between. The Salinas Valley in the west and Bear Valley on the east. Its unique values and attractions draw tourists from all over the world. And its status as a national park is a testament to their points uh and its beauty as well. So on behalf of myself and the city council, the city of Solid, we celebrate the tenth anniversary of Pinnacles National Park. And we must also recognize a continued stewardship stewardship and preservation efforts of both the park and its gateway communities. The dedication and support of local residents have been crucial in maintaining the park's beauty and ensuring that it remains cherished. As a national treasure for generations to come. So it's our honor to be able to present this and then we we can um. Take a little moment to be able to provide this to you and take a photo. I just wanna share my story going to the park and I know. I, you know, I wish every one of our residents, you know, visits the park and its beauty. It's just amazing. But as a little girl, we used to go up there with another local family from here. Um, and you know, there were the Lizamas and we used to go up there and play baseball of all things. Um, but I grew up going to the park. I mean, that was like our playground. So for me, it's just majestic, its beauty. And as a mom, it was constant, you know, constant uh trips with my kids up there to just go have lunch and enjoy the beauty. So. The Pinnacles National Park for me and I hope it it is for many of our community members, just an opportunity for us to really be able to cherish and create. Those memories of the beauty that we have in our backyard. So I just absolutely, this park is amazing and really close to my heart. So it's an honor for us to be able to. To celebrate its tenth anniversary um and just to make sure that we all get out there and enjoy the beauty of the park. And and make sure that we're good stewards and preserve its beauty and its nature. Thank you. So I'm gonna open it up to the council members if there's any um comments and I'll start with council member.
Thank you. So I've been I've been living in Solid for thirty-six or seventy years. And I remember I can see all the changes that have been applied to that, to the park. But one thing that I that I, well, at least for my kids now that I have. Uh, we always go there to see that converse. That is an incredible animal and and not just the beauty of the place, but also the animals that are there. It's easy to see a bunch of pigs and that and the wildlife is incredible. So thank you so much for. Being there and and I really appreciate that. We need to guys.
Councilmember Chavis?
You know, for me, I um, you know, I remember the when it was signed back in January tenth of twenty twenty thirteen. Uh, the council at the time immediately uh took the task to uh. Make sure that we named ourselves the Gateway to the Pinnacles. Um, and it was something that we had been talking about for a very short period of time. And we had a very short period of time for our monuments that we have at the beginning at the entrance of both of our. Um, entrances from the freeway, uh, we were in construction of those monument signs and we stopped. The construction of those signs uh to make certain that we were able to brand ourselves as the gateway to the Pinnacles. And I know that uh since that branding, um, our sales tax went up approximately eleven percent just. By branding ourselves Gateway to the Pinnacles. And I know that San Benito County, back in February of this year. Uh, decided that they want to try to figure out how they could try to brand themselves as well. And they just uh named themselves the home of the Pinnacles. So, uh, I think everyone is always trying to figure out what they can do with the Pinnacle, but the reality is that. We have it right here in our backyard and um thanks to Sam Far of being able to get a. Bart bipartisanship uh vote to make this the fifty-ninth National Park. And President Barack Obama signing that on the tenth of January two twenty thirteen. Uh, we haven't seen another national park happen since then. Uh, and there is so much uh fighting in in. Washington right now. I don't know if something as simple as making something a national park could actually happen. So I think we are. Blessed to have this national park be named that and for us to be able to. Just have such a beauty in our backyard. So, uh, thank you guys for working there and. You know, it gets so full on the weekends sometimes. The work that you guys do is is amazing. Because we do have such an amazing place there. So thank you guys.
Yeah, thank you.
And yes, just wanted to uh thank you guys for being here. Congratulations on the the ten years. Um, when I think of the Pinnacles, besides memories of going out, going through the caves, I think that's my favorite part of it. If, you know, I think about the contours, uh, the caves and the conservation. Um, and I I know, uh, I believe the visitors fluctuate from two hundred to three hundred thousand a year. Um, and and uh even with those numbers, even though they appear huge, where I believe like number six on the on the visitors, the California. Uh, National Park visitors. Um, we come down as as number six, which is not definitely a bad thing. Because that helps you to keep that conservation going and and the nature of it all, right? Um, but I just wanted to uh thank you guys for your work and also um Blanca Stransky. I know she wasn't able to. Be here. I think she might be on soon. Um, but I really have had the honor of working with her the last maybe like three years. Um, I know she's making a lot of changes and has a lot of plans. Um, you guys have the uh the internship program. Um, I know she's trying to reach out and work more, uh, hire more from within the Gateway Cities, including Solid. Um, and also we have uh some partnerships uh that I'm working on uh with her that that are gonna benefit our city. So just wanted to, you know, uh, thank you guys for everything that you do and and keep up the great work and congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, same as the others had mentioned as well. It's it's such a nice place to go and to be experienced. To go outside and and hike and experience the the caves, uh, see the condos. If there's one request, if if you guys can bring in a few more uh bald eagles. Get to see a lot of them. I know you don't have the choice of it. But uh, yeah, it it's outstanding and it's a jewel for our community. And I know it's a little ways away from here, but I remember going there as kids and. And high school kids, we'd go up there as well to go explore the caves. So if you haven't had a chance and local residents. And you'll be surprised, oftentimes, I've never been there. It's in our backyard. People come from all over to go experience the Pinnacles. So, uh, local residents, if you haven't had an opportunity, make sure you get out there at least to go, you know, visit the 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 site because it's a beautiful park. And uh, you know, the nature itself is is gorgeous. So, thank you. Congratulations on your tenth anniversary.
Yeah, thank you. So I don't know if you wanna share a few words?
Uh, just say, uh, thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you very much, Council. Uh, I don't have a much to say, other than just a big expression of appreciation for you. Uh, oh. Uh, the national park uh just outside the city is inextricably linked to the city of Solid. Uh, just by virtue of you can't get to the West Side without passing through. And the last ten years, we've seen a lot of growth since becoming a national park. Uh, and I know that the city of Solid has seen a lot of growth as well. And I think we're all looking forward to seeing the park and the city both continue to grow together. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, I'm wearing raised Suez Valley of praise in Solid. So I myself have a great love, appreciation for Pinnacles National Park. I absolutely love to see you continue stewardship of City Solid with Pinnacles. Um, and I'm continuing, hope to continue supporting this relationship. Um, I always love to see locals, as mentioned, so people don't go out to Pinnacles and that's kind of why I love visiting Pinnacles. I wanna get people out there. So I also wanna encourage residents of Solid to go out and visit Pinnacles. It's your national park. You should visit.
Oh, thank you so much. Appreciate that. And so so awesome that you're a local and to really encourage others, right? For that preservation, but also to be in that workforce, to to be in, you know, the rangers in in the park. Um, you know, the state parks program is really important. So, so awesome that you represent Solid. And then at this point, Council, if we wanna take just a pause for three minutes. Have to take a photo with the proclamation. Much again and thank you for your patience. So we'll move on to our next item on the agenda. At this time, we have our consent calendar. And today we have item C one, you see four. And at this time, do we have any members of the uh. Public that want to pull an item from the consent calendar for future discussion or additional discussion or questions? Okay, see none, then I'll bring it to the council. If there is any member of the council that was that wishes to pull a consent agenda item for additional discussion or comment.
Two and four.
Two and four.
Comment a question.
Okay, Council, so we have item C one and C three. Do we wanna make a motion for, I can entertain a motion to approve item C one and C three? So we have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, so motion carries and we'll begin with item C dash two.
Just, just a question because I I was going through it. Um, I see like last time it's probably nothing, but I just. So that I can understand it. Uh, I see a lot of supplies, but it's only supply, supplies, supplies. Or program supplies. And I was wondering if there's any way that you can extend maybe uh. Initials or something so so that I can understand what program, what um uh supplies are. There's supply, supply, but there's nothing. And uh, and I was wondering about the ribbon cutting season. So is is there any way that we can extend a little bit more of the description?
I've been trying to work on that, but I need to continue that.
Can I go with my other question?
Uh, yes, so are we done with C dash two?
Yes, yes, sir.
So we'll go on to um item C dashboard.
Uh, C dash for, uh, C uh, C four is a, would it would it be possible to see a report? I mean, this is the first time that I go to this. So, would I, uh, uh, we're gonna get a report of how those surplus. Equipment are not either disposed or sold. Like it says that it's gonna be sold or disposed or uh. We're getting a uh for your own.
Yes, we'll do a summary. Uh, Mike, I don't know if we did it formally or just in the public works activities report, so the results of the auction. And disposal of all the surplus items will be logged and reported against.
Okay, thank you. I just have one one question done in terms of just the process and policies for that, um, since council member brought it up. So what is the policy in terms of it first goes out to the public, so the public has first options to be able to. Purchase or to bid on any of these and then it comes to staff or employees or is it just open? It doesn't matter?
It's.
Do we have any policies on that?
Given any consideration to staff outside of being part of the general public. In the in the past and probably don't intend to do that. So it goes out to the public. Vehicles are auctioned off at the courtyard. So the equipment might be auctioned auctioned off there or on an auction website. Uh, we've done desks and things like that on an office website before, but it's open to the public. So whoever reads the public notice. It's to bid on it.
Thank you. So. Also, then if I can get a motion to approve item C dash two and C dashboard. Second, so all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, so motion carries. So we'll move on to our next item, which is our business item. And today we have five of those. So I will start with item B one, consideration of financial report for the Fourth of July committee for our C dash. And I will turn this over to our city, our city manager.
Members of the council, uh, a few weeks ago, we learned that the Fourth of July committee. Uh, was going to request funding from the council instead of asking them to come in off the agenda. In light of the deadlines that they're facing, they're just putting on the agenda and have you consider the extent to which you want to be responsive to their request for funding. Uh, the staff report uh indicates that we have provided funding in the past, but not every single year. And so we suggest two things. First, you consider their request and I understand this Thomasini is in the audience and referred to. Uh, present her request. But secondly, once you determine how much, whether you want us to continue this on a regular basis. So we don't have to have uh an annual last minute process. We can put it in the budget at your suggestion, at whatever level you suggest. So that concludes the staff report.
Thank you. So I will, let me take it out to the public council if we're okay with that and then we'll come back for comments and questions. So, uh, members of the public that wish to speak on item B dash one, let me take it up to our Zoom audience first. And then I'll bring it back to our chambers. There's any members of our audience that are joining us via Zoom. Okay, I see them. So I will bring it back to um those that are joining us here in our chambers. So I know Tony is here.
I really, Paul Thomasini, received a four hundred net stroke solid ad. I really wasn't prepared to make a presentation. I I just uh had called pyrotechnics. Oh, I don't know, about a month ago. And then I I had called your your city secretary to see. If uh any consideration was being made or whatnot or whatnot. Um. I I know it's probably our fault. We're we're needing members on our committee. There's only about three or four of us on the committee and. I'm of the age now where I'm slowing down. I'm not as sharp as what I used to be, believe me. So, I, I really have to get my, all my records together. Last year, even though the city paid for the fireworks, uh, the committee spent about $7,000 themselves. You know, because we had, you know, two bands, and we have to rent a stage, we have to rent toilets, uh, advertising, we have to get liability insurance. A stage, we have to rent a stage, you know, there's expenses too besides the fireworks cost. So, um, I, I have to, I, I just received, you know, I, I didn't come in town early enough today to, to read this consideration of financial support memo that was written by Jessica Potts. But anyway, I, I have to get my records together, but according to my records, I went back on some checking account statements. In 2016, we paid 16,000. The committee paid 16,000. 2017, I'm not sure. 2018, we paid 18,000. 2019, we paid 18,000. But Jessica has on here that the city paid for the year 2019. I'll have to go back and, and check further. I know last year, he paid, you know, the whole 20,000. Uh, I called the pyrotechnics spectacular today, Jennifer Waite. And she says, really, the going price now is not, not 20,000 anymore. It's, uh, it's a 25,000, believe it or not, but she would still let us have it for 20,000. And it would be a similar show to last year. Uh, she really appreciates our support because we've been using pyrotechnics spectaculars for years. So, um, it's up to you if you want to help us financially or not. If, if you can't, we won't have fireworks. We'll still have a fire, uh, a Fourth of July celebration in the park, but we just wouldn't have the fireworks. And maybe for future, for, for the future, we have to get more people on our committee. And I know the prices of the, of the fireworks that keep going up and up and up. But I, I wish I had mentioned it before. I wish you could do something like the city of Greenfield does. They have some kind of tax measure or something where they have it in their budget, you know, automatically. King City is a different story. King City, no matter what they do, is always a success. They've got a big farmer base that one farmer outdoes the other, and, and they belong to a chamber of commerce, and, and they pay heavy dues, and we, we just can't compete with King City, I'm sorry. You know, so it's up to you, you know, if you feel that you can help us, fine. If not, we'll still have some kind of a celebration for the Fourth of July. I, I, I wish, I know this is not possible, but I wish all the illegal fire people, firecrackers, people would all come together in a park and shoot them all off, you know? There's so many illegal fireworks, you know, and some of those.
Fire chief over there says he's smiling too.
Anyway, those illegal fireworks are almost, almost like the professional fireworks, you know? So, uh, anyway, whatever we decide, it's okay with us. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Pauline.
Thank you, Pauline, and I, and I don't believe that you're slowing down for a bit, Pauline. So, thank you for all of your efforts, and you know, we really appreciate everything you do for the city of, of Solid Ed, and I know you've been doing this for a long time, and you're, you're added every year with the Fourth of July parade. And I know, I, I agree that I, I think at some point, we have to come to a resolution. How do we don't keep bringing this back every year if the city determines that this isn't part enough for our community, um, that we really set it aside as, as recommended in terms of the report to set aside in the budget allocation. So, this doesn't happen again. I know we've had multiple conversations throughout the past several years in terms of how do we really be, how do we come to a resolution? I know some of the comments, um, you know, that were provided previously was doing it on a Saturday instead of, or doing it on the day before um, the Fourth of July to see if that would alleviate some of the expenses of the fireworks. And I, I know King City obviously does theirs on a Saturday before the Fourth of July, and they still have a lot of people come out there. I know in terms of the illegal fireworks, we've had conversations every year about how do you deter that? What can you do? What can you implement? Um, and I know that there's, you know, different fines that we went to look at our ordinance and increase some of the fines, and but I know that's always been really difficult. And I think the other thing that we've done with the fire chief has been really doing a lot of outreach as well and making sure that people know it's illegal, and here's the fines that you're gonna get. Obviously, it's really hard to prosecute and to process because by the time the police department get there, you know, people, nobody's there, right? And nobody's gonna turn in their neighbor. And so, I know we, we battled with that, and not just us. I think many other cities have that same. And, and it was really crucial during the fires because we wanted to make sure that, you know, we didn't have that. And so, there's been a lot of issues with that. So, I just want to clarify in terms of the recommendation, because so here, it's not, you're saying it's 25,000? That's what's needed now? So, it's not 20 as what's in the report?
She said they'll give it just for 20.
Oh, for 20?
Yeah.
For 20. And then the recommendation, though, just to be clear, uh, and the recommendation from staff is to be able to provide the 5,000 um, as part of the, uh, the allocation that we looked at with our, our grants, uh, the community grants program.
Uh, if I could, separate two questions. What should we do this year? What should we do in the future? Start with the future. Uh, we think it is an important community event that ought to be supported with city funds. And so, we recommend that the council direct us to allocate at least $5,000 in each subsequent year. Question for this year is, do you want to allocate even more for to pay for the fireworks at $20,000?
Question?
Okay, yeah, thank you for clarifying.
And I did check with the finance director this morning. Uh, and if even at the $20,000 level, there would not need to be any additional budget, for the sufficient budget to accommodate that.
Okay, so we have enough money for this year?
Yes.
Okay, um, council member covered it?
No, I was gonna ask if you want, are you proposing 5,000 dollars or add 5,000 dollars to that?
We're, we're, our recommendation is that this is an important community event that ought to be supported by the city's budget, and that in subsequent budgets, we budget at least $5,000.
So, for this budget, just to be clear, it's 20,000?
Yeah. For this, for this.
For this, okay.
But ironically, the Fourth of July is the next fiscal year, but we have, we have to pay more distance for you.
Okay, yeah, thank you. So, who, council member, do they have another?
Yeah, so, so if we know that the cost is increasing, why not allocate that $20,000? So, about $25,000 right away instead of just $5,000?
Uh, well, we think it's, it's the council determination how much you want to contribute on each, but you're, uh, because it is a community group that does fundraising, and some suggestions that with more members, they might do a better job of fundraising. So, uh, the question is, do you want us to be a city event or not, or a community event with community fundraising? Those are policy choices, I think, that the council has.
Okay, yeah, thank you for that. So, I will turn it over to council member Chavez. Do you have any comments or questions?
For me, I think that if, I think that we should be supporting something that has been a tradition here in, in Solid Ed for so many years. I think I can only recall one year since I've been here, and, you know, I haven't been here as long as everybody else. I've only been here for over 20 years. And during that time, I only recall one year where we didn't have fireworks. Um, but I, I think that that's something that our citizens want, expect. Uh, and so, we should be providing that, that part of it. I think as far as the other piece that is the celebration, I think that really should fall on the committee to try to figure out how to raise. And I'm okay with looking at what we could do as a mini grant for that organization, if that's a possibility to do something to support them in that, in that aspect as well. Um, there's a lot of ways that the committee could raise the dollars for the, uh, for the stage, for the music. You know, there's partnerships that they could do with radio stations, so on and so forth. Uh, that could help to alleviate some of that, that, that pressure. But I think as far as the fireworks are concerned, I think, I think we should support it.
Thank you, council member Chavez. So, turn it over to council member Cora Mejo.
Yes, and I actually, before I give my, uh, I guess my comments, I have a question for, for Pauline. Um, and I'm just wondering, the, the Fourth of July committee, is that a nonprofit, or are you just working under the umbrella of the chamber or the Solid Ed chamber? One says yes, and one says it's a separate entity. And we're nonprofit. Okay, so. Yeah, is the Fourth of July committee a nonprofit standing on its own, or are you guys under the umbrella of the Solid Ed chamber?
No, we're standing on our own.
Okay. Nonprofits are, okay, okay, thank you. Um, yeah, um, I agree also, you know, that the fireworks are, you know, uh, a great, great for our community. I know I went last year. Um, I loved the fireworks. They seemed to go on forever too, which was, um, awesome. And I think, uh, what Ed brought up was, uh, he was asking like, what is kind of like the looking out like for next year, I guess. And I think to me, what, what I would like to do is, um, maybe have our, our community engagement department uh, and our parks and rents. We have these departments now. I think I would love to see them taking a lead when it comes to, to this event. And I think that would, um, hopefully, elevate, elevate sorry, some of the, um, issues that you're having, like you say, you know, you know, it sounds like you don't have a full, full board or full support from the community, um, on, on your board right now. Um, and also, uh, you know, just the, the, the money portion, I guess, us putting money into it. Because I know from the mini grants, one of the things that I recall that was said at the last meeting, where we discussed mini grants, was that we didn't want to support any organization continually. We wanted it to be a one time, and I don't recall who said that, but I think as a council, we all agreed that we're listening to be a continuous thing. It was gonna be a kind of one time help, you know, help the nonprofit, uh, or, or, you know, organization try to get on their feet. So, that's what I would like to say, right, to see our community engagement and parks and rent kind of take the lead on this. I think, you know, we have the, the staff for it. And I think that that would help you guys. That's why we wouldn't have to be every year trying to figure out what we're gonna get funding for.
So, council member, I may have put them?
Yes, uh. Well, first off, thank Pauline and the, and the volunteers for putting this on in here. Got an opportunity to work with, uh, Pauline with the Solid Ed yesterday for many years, and I know what a hard worker and a dedicated individual she is, and what is really a community gem for the city of Solid Ed. So, I want to thank her for that first and foremost. And then secondly is, we're, we're in a different position than we were before. We now have a recreation department that we didn't have before. So, therefore, I was hoping we're gonna transition into, or we would use that recreation of, uh, department to help coordinate, organize, solicit assistance and those, those type of things uh, on an annual basis. So, therefore, um, there won't be as much onus on the volunteers themselves. They'll come in and support the rec department to help put this on. But I, I think it's an important event for us to have on an annual basis, you know? So, our country's, uh, you know, Fourth of July is our birthday, and I think the community enjoys it's, it's summertime, getting together and interacting. But I'd like to see, you know, a big parade like in the old days going down the main strip of town, not the little tiny parade that, and I know you guys do, you know, such a great job, and, and you were doing your best with what you have. But that way, there's an outreach. We use our communications department, uh, community engagement department to get that outreach, to get those organizations participating in the event, because we can't work inside of us. And we talk about that. We, we can't. We have the infrastructure in place now. We have the departments in place to carry this forward. So, I would like to see similar to what, uh, council member Cora Edgerton is move forward. Support them this year to, in some type of manner, to, uh, to have the event, uh, the fireworks, because I know the event's gonna go on anyway. Uh, thanks to your dedication, your volunteer time, um, to make it happen. But then, uh, we get the rec department and the community engagement, uh, department involved as well. Uh, staff like as soon as possible to help assist with this at this point, and whether we get staff to come together to do a meeting with them, with the volunteers to help out and see what we need to do to do this collectively and put on the best events we can. But for the future, have even better events and include it in our way.
So, uh, mayor put them, thank you. So, just to clarify, you are in agreement with what's under recommendation for 20,000 to be able to provide them this year? And then, you know, obviously with every, every coming back to be able to look at this as an event within the recreation department, to be able to work in partnership with the Fourth of July committee, because that's the recommendation. So, I just want to be clear that you're.
Right, so there, yeah, that's what I'm saying, that it's the line and that we'll assist them, that we'll, we'll look at it, but it's up to a certain amount and therefore utilizing sponsors and other, other funding avenues to, to, uh, put on the event. So, but also to assist with, you know, attracting and recruiting volunteers and those types of things. But working through our recreation department and our community engagement department.
So, let me, um, yes, do you have a?
Yeah, I, I was, um, I think, I think that what they're asking is for 25,000, because they don't have any money right now.
20,000, maybe 20,000.
20?
Yeah, 20,000. So, just want to clarify, it's 20,000.
And handle it right now.
20,000, and there's money in a bunch. Hold on, let me just finish. Did you have another question?
I, well, um, I, I agree with, um, uh, council member Cora, like the, the, um, a recommendation of forgetting those $5,000 from the, from the municipal government is probably not. I was wondering if it is, if, if they're gonna pay $20,000 for, for just for the fireworks. And there's only three people in that committee. Uh, I don't know how much money you guys need for the, for the rest of the event. But I, I, I truly feel like instead of 20, we should give them 25, so they're gonna stand in. If not, 20, we find them.
So, so I think the, the mention was that it's 20,000, what's the ask? And the, uh, to put on the other portion of it, because it's the fireworks plus the event was 7,000. And so, that's not what they're asking from us in terms of what it costs, because they have music and they have, you know, other vendors that, you know, music and entertainment and stuff that they pay during that time. So, I think, counsel, just for purposes of what we're, what we're, um, what the recommendation is, is the 20,000 for this year. Um, and then to, for the future years, to, to make sure that we're working with our recreation department and the committee members, uh, to be able to ensure that next year it's in partnership. So, it doesn't continue to come back to the city council every year.
Through the chair, um, I also wanted to make a, a suggestion. I know it sounds like we've been using the same company every, every year, and that's awesome. But I, you know, I think there's also a lot of benefit in looking for other, other companies, maybe other agencies that might be, well, you know, looking for new customers. I might be willing to give a better, a better prize. So, that's just an idea to throw out there.
Thank you for those comments. So, the, do you have a different comment?
Yes, I have a different comment, because we're talking about two different things. We're talking about next year and this year. And I think that we already took, have announced to assign that activity to the recreation department. We haven't, we haven't asked them if they agree to, to, to have that partnership. And I think that for, for next year, we have to ask them, are you, are you guys willing to partner with, with our city and, and, and make that happen? This one thing is that we suggest, the other one is that we impose on them, we don't know what they want to do for next year. They need the help this year, but we have to ask them if they, they're willing to partner with us.
So, so thank you for clarifying that. So, I, I, I want to make sure we stick to what the recommendation is for this year. And the recommendation that we have before us is the 20,000 to be able to give to the Fourth of July committee to make sure that they have the fireworks event, um, for this year. Um, and then I think during the budget process, we can bring this back for discussion and see how, um, how we want to, you know, how that wants, how we want to move forward with that. But I think as we're having our budget workshops, and if that's gonna be included in next year's budget, then I think that's appropriate time to bring it back when we're discussing the budget workshops, and then we can have that discussion if they decide they do not want to partner. And, uh, whatever decision is made, then we have that conversation then at that budget, during that budget time. So, the, the recommendation before us is to be able to consider financial support to the fireworks committee, to the Fourth of July. To the uh, Fourth of July committee fireworks event for twenty thousand.
Do we need a motion? Yes.
Yes, yes.
I moved that we uh, what the twenty thousand dollars for this year for the um. Uh, for to do like the committee.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll go ahead and second that.
Okay, so we have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
I could clarify, uh. I think we clearly understand that councils using twenty thousand dollars and last year we actually paid. Directly to the fireworks company and that's I think what we're doing in this year.
Yeah. Yeah.
And through the chair, can can, if you guys need assistance, can they work with a a red uh, manager? To see if we can provide any other additional assistance to them.
So Pauline could, I mean, I think that can be done separately from our discussion here. Yeah.
But I want to make sure the city manager would.
Oh, yes. And so you'll um, work with. Uh, Pauline, I know for this discussion, it's twenty thousand that the city is allocating.
The council member prefers what to the extent they wish us to.
Exactly.
Wish to work with us.
And then we'll bring, we'll bring this back for discussion during workshop, the budget workshop for next year.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you so much, Pauline, for everything that you do and for continuing to make sure that we have a celebration. Okay, so we'll move on to the next item on our agenda and at this time.
If you guys want to read Smokey the Bear or something.
Okay, so we'll go on to our next item, council. Um, it's item B dash two, discussion regarding. Moving forward with city programming for funding of community service programs and activities and I'll turn this over to our. Uh, community engagement manager.
Good evening, council. Uh. Thank you for having this up again, just, you know, to be brief, I'm reading this matter up. Um, as a follow up conversation from uh, you know, April sixth and then when we brought this up again, so. In a nutshell, um, we took into consideration everything that was discussed. And the difference, the biggest difference between this proposal and the previous one is that we incorporated greater alignment with council votes. More clear language on five oh one C three status, fiscal sponsor and organizations working to acquire their five oh one C three status. Uh, we added language on organizations that do not have to, that making it clear that organizations don't have to reside. In the city of Solidit, but have to do work within the city boundaries. Uh, and then the city will prioritize organizations that do not have. Various sources of funding. So someone that's already giving money for to their farm, then the government down and may not be our highest priority. Um, and then, of course, the city will attempt to fund a variety of organizations. So keep an equal balance between sports, performing arts, uh, art and crafts, things like that. So those are the the main differences between the whole today and the one from west, the previous one.
Yeah, th- thank you, Jesus, for bringing this back uh, to the council. Thank you for pointing out what we had requested to be brought back and those changes that were made in the. Um, and and this council report. So council, I do ask, and we were gonna open it up, let me open it up to comments, but I do want to make sure that I know this has been brought back multiple times. And I really do hope that the end, the discussion today will help. To make sure that we finalize this process so we can begin to implement the process. Uh, so let me open it up to our public first, um, and then we'll bring it to council, um, comments and consideration. Any um, members of the public wish to uh, make the comments on item B two? Okay, there are no comments, so I will take it out for those that are joining us via Zoom. Any members of the public joining us via Zoom?
Okay.
Okay, so then I'll bring it back now to council for. Uh, discussion and comments and see if we can come to a resolution tonight so we can start moving this forward. And I will excuse myself for a few minutes, so I will turn this over to Mayor Proten, if you can start us off in the discussion.
Sure, let's go ahead. Uh, council, any any questions, any comments regarding the recommendation that you'd like to consider?
Uh, no, I think you guys did a wonderful job. Uh, my only question when we went to uh, organizations, what is the the application? Do you have a timeline for?
Yes, we we want to do one or two informational sessions in May, so that that way uh, the application process can be done.
Okay, but but if I can remember correctly, that do they for the application is in May fifteenth?
Uh, we're gonna do two, so I probably by miss, oh, uh, let me just look that up again.
Yeah.
Yes, the due date is the fifteenth of May from one on. So we want to actually start rolling out the information session. Yes, or you know, as soon as this is done, we can um, finalize the actual application and we can. As soon as two weeks from now, we can start our information sessions.
And I, are we getting a label?
Councilmen, gentlemen.
You you know, I think that we kind of uh, kind of use the word, but we're, we we've done it and so we're good.
Thank you.
Cora. Um, yeah, I'm saying, no, no, no comment, we. Be the dead horse.
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm gonna beat the dead horse. It's has to do with the five oh one three C and it says uh, that it's so vague, the ambiguity of it is that. We have to have a file for valid, which is understandable, five oh one C three. Be in the process of acquiring a five oh one three C, so maybe they've got their paper and, you know. Um, I filed before and had a five oh one three C for one of our organizations, so I know that's the process. And then have a or have a reputable uh, fiscal sponsor. So it's like anybody.
Um, if they do not have a fiscal sponsor, then they will not.
So w- with that, for me, councils, the 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 issue I have is that uh. You know, I'd like there to be, you know, these organizations with doing business or in the city limits. In addition to having a valid five oh one three C, so that would be the one caveat that I would want to have changed. And since the mayor has come back, I'm gonna turn back over to him.
Yeah, thank, thank you, thank you, Mayor Proten. So, um. Thank you for your comments. I'll just clarify since I was not here, but you you want to add more?
No, 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 I just want to remove uh, in the process of, so. Uh, criteria consideration is like one, two, three, four, five, six, pull it down. It says must have a valid five oh one C three, be in the process of acquiring a five oh one C three. Or have it or have a uh, repeated fiscal sponsor.
Through the chip.
Okay, so.
So so what I would like to see removed is be in the process. Uh, and also the second portion of the reputed fiscal sponsor and then also be in the city limits. Or doing business in the city.
Okay, thank you for that. So I will, let me go this way, council, if you don't mind, so.
Well, I, before we have a motion, um, because I I was um, I was suggesting that portion of uh. Because I know a couple of uh, nonprofit organizations that lost their charter and they're in the process and a couple of them. Don't even have, they cannot raise money because they don't have that uh, that taking care of and. So they don't have any money to. Continue the process. Um, that process costs six hundred dollars just to uh, estimate the letter for. Uh, exemption with the IRS and that is just that one. They they still have to go through the the process in this, in that, in the state. So that's why I was suggesting maybe if they can prove that they're going through the process. In re getting their their uh, five oh one C three recognition, then they could be able to to apply, because. Where, if they don't have the five oh one C three, this is really difficult for them to raise money. So if we're gonna do a push for them, so they can become uh, sound reliable, then they need a little bit of money to do that.
Yeah, so let let me just ask our city attorney in terms of the use of those funds. Uh, can we, as public funds, right, are we able to? Provide public funding to someone that is not a five oh one C three? Or is it enough to say they're in the process and we have that documentation that, I mean, we obviously want to make sure that. Before we release funds that we have um, authority to do that. I just want, if you can clarify that for us, because I think that's gonna be important in terms of. Is it legal? Can we do that with public funds?
Uh, you know, I don't know the answer to that question. I I don't, I don't know whether or not uh, the must have a ballot. That that would be, I mean, that's a condition we've imposed, but I know that cities are able to provide funding to groups that are not five oh one three Cs and so forth. So. This seems to be specific to this particular grant program that we want, but um. So I think that there is a way to provide funding to other projects. We've done that in the past and so forth. I think that this was just. This is the nature of this particular grant. The discussion has been five oh one three Ts are who this we want to focus on and. The be in the process of acquiring, I agree, is a little bit um, ambiguous in terms of what's that mean? Does that mean I called somebody? Does it mean I actually have paperwork or something? It's really hard for us to verify what that status is.
But wait, there are, oh, sorry.
I think, I don't think there's an issue with it legally or not. I think the, you know, city something does, city Watson does. There's tons of cities that that give to organizations committees. Neighborhood groups, so on and so forth. I think the one thing, though, as far as that ambiguity, it is, it is pretty ambiguous. So I think the one thing that I like that could happen would be that it it's not that hard, I think, to get a fiscal sponsor. Um, to have one or the other, like to have a, you know, the community action board or somebody be a fiscal sponsor. Uh, you know, if you're going through the process, I don't think that they, any of those organizations would not want to be a fiscal sponsor. They'll they'll pretty much do it, Monterey County. Community foundation usually will do it or the um, community action board, the Action Council of 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 Monterey County will do it. So I I think. I mean, that could be the other way of doing it, because I think anybody will, that would be a fiscal sponsor.
So the solution is for those organizations to go outside the city to request help and become us five oh C three. For to work with children in the, in the city network.
Wow, so okay, so.
So I I I'm sorry, but I don't, I don't see that, that uh. That clearly, because same thing with the with organizations or with the groups that have fiscal uh, supporters. Uh, when it comes to the five oh C three, you can easily type the name that in in the IRS and it will bring out that a name when they lose the charter and. And they, there is a specific uh, form uh, form that they have to submit. Uh, we asking for proof that they're doing, we asking for proof at the end of the the fiscal year, so they can prove that they're using the money for that purpose. I don't see why not. I mean, uh. Are we trying to do something or we trying to, uh, what the organizations can do again, some, some of that.
Yeah, thank you. Um, thank, thank you, council member, cover that up for that. I think for me, I just want to go back and remind you, council, I think one of the reasons why we wanted to establish and we've gone through this for a long time. One of the reasons why we really wanted to establish this opportunity was obviously there's a lot of nonprofits, right? Uh, but we wanted to make sure that this was an opportunity to be able to provide money to some of those other groups that typically may not. Have the ability to be able to do that and uh, to be able to to get funds, because most of. The entities do require them to be a five oh one C three, to be able to provide funding. So I think a discussion for us was, look, we want to be able to provide some of those local groups, whether it be sports, performing arts and. To have the opportunity to be able to give them a one time fund, whether one time uh, uh, grant. Uh, to be able to do, it's obviously, we said it's not ongoing, but they want to do, you know, they want to put together an art show. They want to put together. Um, you know, something else that that we want to make sure that we have this opportunity, not just for. A a valid five oh one C three, but I think for us, if we can determine, look, they're in the, they're in the process or. Uh, you know, they're gonna get the five oh one C three within a.
Six months.
Six month process, six months to a year. And I think the important thing about this is that. Jesus, thank you for saying part of this is gonna be outreach and workshops, right? So no one's gonna get the money. Um, you know, until they attend some of these workshops and they know what's required of them. I think for me, just attaching this to be able to say, look, we're going out. Part of what we're gonna do is a comprehensive outreach to make sure that it's not just people that. That know about this, that can do this, but that we're really getting those groups that have great ideas. And that have, want to do good things for our community, but they don't have the resources. And that they come to us and that we're able through that process to be able to determine. And we're still gonna determine whether it's, does it align with, you know, what what we want to see in our community, if there's a need in the community, are they feeling that? This is something that's good for our community and we're still gonna go through that process. So I think we still have an opportunity to be able to. Ask questions when this comes before us to determine whether they have a five oh one C three or not. I think it's an opportunity. For us to determine whether that's the a a project that we want to see happen in our communities.
And I could always just include a little bit more details, do some research to see how far along any applicants have come in the. Five oh one, two, three, uh, acquisition process. And then we can include that if, you know, our department deemed it worthy of go to the next level. Um, I'll be sure to include those.
Through the chair, um, I just wanted to say for me personally, um, I I don't have an issue with the way it's worded, you know, helping out. People or organizations that have a five oh one C three are in the process or have the the fiscal sponsor on the list and. For me was here today, which was the the swim booster club. We helped them out, look at and look at what they did. Like that was huge. And I think tomorrow, those is, those of us that attend will see it, that it's not just the booster club that we helped, but it's. You know, uh, pretty much like, uh. Uh, I can't think of the one right on legacy, a legacy that we're leaving, not just for them, for others, some teams to come or even for the rec center to be able to offer different programs. That they weren't able to offer uh, before. I think to me that as long as uh, as the organization or the group is in good standing with the community. Um, I I don't see an issue as long as they're good with the city.
Yeah, thank you, Councilor Cora. Also, so I guess just to clarify, you know, what the boosters and money didn't go to, that's why I was asking for that legal question, because the money. Did not go to the group. It went to the school district, which is another entity. So I just want to make sure that we are clear. And that we have that legal mic that, you know, we can, we haven't done it in the past and I know obviously other cities have done it, but just to make sure. You know, how that transaction's gonna happen.
Want verification.
Exactly.
Okay, and there there's a whole uh, agent's guide on um. Making donations to various charitable organizations and so forth, so I'll double check on that.
Yeah, so whether it be, so what, because we're saying grant instead of a donation, which is something different.
Right, right.
Yeah. Okay, council member, cover that, I, you could.
You, do we need a motion or?
Yes.
Just real quick before, I hate that, again, to delay anything, but just, I wanted to make sure the first criteria for consideration is applications will be weighed on how aligned they are with council priorities and goals. I just want to make sure that we have a meeting of the minds as to what council priorities and goals are. Are we talking about written priorities and goals? Are we talking about goals and priorities that are given to the city manager or the staff? It's it's pretty vague and I wanted to make sure that we had some sort of understanding or meeting of the minds as to what we're referring to there.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying that. Um, yeah, I I I think, and I know that we said we're gonna do our, you know, our council priorities and goals, but. I I think it's important to say established or approved council priorities and goals, so that way it's not individual priorities and goals, as you said.
Or changing.
But it's an approved council priority and goal.
That's fine. And we do, and we have had those in the past and and we still have some on the books. That directions and priorities and goals were provided to the last city manager and so forth. So um, I just want to make sure that that's what we're referring to.
Thank you for clarifying that, because I think that is makes it a more clarity.
So I moved the business item number B to be uh, approved by the council, uh, as clearly written.
For a second, yes. Okay, so we have a first and a second, over.
Can you subordinate uh, motion?
Oh, you you want to do, um.
Substitute.
Substitute motion. Uh, with the amendment. To his motion is that we create a timeline of those in the process of a five oh one three. So the language includes that. We get rid of a little bit of the ambiguity, ambiguity in there.
Okay, so that's a friendly amendment?
Yeah, I accept the the amendment.
Okay, so I don't need the substitute one.
So you accept the friendly amendment. We'll go to friendly amendment and council member, cover that, I accepted the friendly amendment. Okay, so we have a first and a second, okay? All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay, good. Thank you, council. We finally uh, got this through. Thank you, Jesus, for making those changes and now. We're excited about implementation. Thank you. Okay, so we'll move on, council, to the next item on our agenda, which is social media policies and it's item B dash three and I will hand this again over to our community engagement. And I will hand this again over to our community engagement manager.
Yes, and, and I will also be honored, City Attorney, for any support on this, but. Um, you have here proposed, uh, social media guidelines. Uh, I believe that the most important component of this or multiple components, right? But one is that this is really geared toward the official city solid ads, uh, social media pages. Uh, this is not included with PD or partisan brand, right? Um, and the other one is that in, in my research, there have been a lot of court pieces about this. Um, I included in there, um, a report of account cities about how far up, even just the Supreme Court, this has gone. So the most recommended language, uh, is included there, right? Social media sites are intended to facilitate communication between the public and the city on the listed topics. And serves as a limited public forum. So what that means is that this is not a complete open forum, right? If somebody goes to the park and starts talking about a topic that I don't agree with, I can't have PD go and get, get them away, right? A limited public forum is like this, somebody can't just come up here as I'm speaking and start saying whatever they want. And it has to be on the topic. And so that gives us the ability to monitor it more. Uh, to be able to, uh, you know, issue warnings and then delete if it falls outside of those guidelines. So, uh, I, I believe that those are the most important components in a nutshell, cities can't delete comments that they just don't like. Uh, so this is kind of our protection from it, and also includes not just. Uh, guidelines on what people can post to us, but also what us as a city can post. Uh, so that includes guidelines on commerce, guidelines on, um, events, guidelines on nonprofits. Uh, so I know it was a lot, but I believe that the most important one was the. The first one, which has the potential to get sued if we just begin to delete.
Okay, thank, thank you, uh, thank you, Jesus, for that. So let me open it up to our public, to see if there's any comments. Um, from our public that's joining us here in the chambers, any comments? Okay, so I'll take it up to anyone that is joining us via Zoom.
I see them.
No, okay, so we'll bring it back then, we'll bring it back to the council for comments and questions, and Ed, do you?
Yeah, I want just a few comments. We, uh, we, we used to have social media guidelines that were a lot thinner than these. And we found that we needed clarity and a more comprehensive approach. So these are the administrative guidelines we have adopted. At the last council meeting, members of the council asked to see them. And the potential would give, revise them if necessary. But I want to let you know, these are the guidelines we've established. Therefore, your review, you want to make some revisions, let us know.
And if, if I may add my apologies, this also, it's not explicit, but it also kind of, um. Mentioned other policies, right, bench policies, um, who is the main owner of, uh. The social media, which is the city manager, who, you know, can delegate at his or her discretion. So this doesn't, uh, it's not exclusive of a lot of them, but, um, it, it's in line with a lot of the policies that we also have in place.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for that. So I'll open it up to the council, um, to see if there's any questions on this. And I, I, I won't start in any manner, I'll just kind of open it up for any other council members that wish to comment.
No comments?
I'll, I'll comment.
Um, yes, that, thank you for that presentation, and I. I haven't been here for long on the council, so I guess my question to you is, uh, what is, what is different from this? Uh, from the social media policies that, that you provided to us? Was there any changes that you made to what was in place before?
Not too major changes, it, it gets a little bit more, you know, some research on what comments could and could not be deleted. Um, there have been some commentators in the past that, you know, were rude and got blocked, and now thinking. Uh, maybe we have to, with eating guidelines, right? Um, some of those will continue to express themselves, so it, it incorporates a lot more of. The court decisions that have come down from the Supreme Court in, in various cases.
So to clarify, you said where comments have been deleted in the past, is that, is that a law by law to remove where, where comments?
No.
No?
Right, I mean, barring certain exceptions, you know, new comments, actual comments, right? But legal opinions specifically, no.
Okay, um, and then I guess my, my other thing is, um. Uh, are we having, is our staff having any kind of training, like our staff, the ones that, uh, and I'm assuming it's you, I'm not sure who else. Um, is, is naming our social media, but whoever from our staff is managing social media, are you guys receiving any training? On, on the laws to make sure that you guys are in compliance with them?
We, we can, uh, so, uh, recently, myself and IT Director Stephen, um. Took a little bit more control of it, so now nobody can delete comments other than him, so for myself. Uh, but there are a number of other staff persons that can post, so we can definitely have a conversation about that.
Do you have any, uh? Any additional comments? No, okay, Councilmember, Charles?
Uh, uh, yeah, just the only question on the deletion of comments. Uh, when it's hate language, it's re, issues of race, uh, sexual issues. Those can be erased, what can be erased? So if you can give me a better sense, I know I, I looked at everything, but I just want for the public to understand. What those, those things that can be either blocked or, or deleted versus, you know, somebody saying, you know, I don't like this.
Yeah, uh, so, for example, uh. So, uh, so I looked at some examples, right, comments not typically related to the particular social media article being commented upon. Um, so we post something about Orchard Lake Park, and somebody comes up with, you know, some other topic. Can be deleted, but typically won't, right? There's a lot of, instead of that part, fix the street. Okay, I guess we could, but you know, that, that, that's not common to be removed, but, you know, um. But the main ones, political endorsements, comments in support of or opposition, of political campaigns or ballot measures. Threatening or profane language or content, content that promotes, fosters, or perpetuates discrimination on basis of race. Creed, color, age, religion, gender, marital status with regard to public assistance, national origin. Physical or mental disability or sexual orientation, sexual conduct or links to sexual content, solicitation of commerce. Uh, so those are, are the main ones, and obviously the main thing that's promoting and you can delete them.
So, so you mentioned solicitation of commerce, so there seems to be a, a lot of public social media. Uh, comments on both, on the public side, when we're talking about cities, counties, where. Some, all of a sudden, something will pop up and say, you know, link to this and blah, 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 and the same thing happens to a lot of news articles as well. So that particular piece as far as solicitation of, of commercial can be erased.
Correct, thank you.
I, I have a update, thank you, Councilmember, you done? Okay, I have a question, and so my question is, um, th- thank you for bringing this forward, thank you for making it clear. I also, and I don't know if we have a communications plan along with this, but I think it's important to be able to look at that. I think at one point we had talked about it. Um, obviously, this is social media, but I think the communications plan is also important too, and I'll just share that I know, um, the city of Philly is. Going through some changes as well, and they have their social media policies, but they're in the process of developing a communications plan as well. And being able to ensure that there's no conflict of interest, obviously, that, you know, there, there's language enough to be able to ensure that our communications. That we're delivering in, um, you know, in adherence to what the, the legal communications is in our, you know, freedom of speech. And, and our First Amendment rights. But I do have a question, this, how do we determine what's a bu- public valid comment from a, a actual person? Because I know that there's been individuals that have commented, um, specifically one that I know in, in ours is Mr. Do Right. And it, it's like a troll account, so how do you, when do you delete that, when you determine it's not a valid account? Uh, that it doesn't lead to someone, so what, what constitutes, I think for me, like in those, can you, I think that's important to clarify. When people are gonna comment, are we just allowing anyone to comment, or troll accounts can be deleted? Troll accounts can be investigated, or if they're, you know, um, I guess that, that's my comment on this social media one, because that's not addressed in here.
Correct, so I did, uh, some research on that, and there was a case where, uh, a disgruntled employee created a troll account. Posted something, kind of concluded that it was a disgruntled employee, blocked that account under a different name, and the city was sued. Because, um.
The city was suing because they got.
Correct. Correct, yes.
Uh, so that's legal?
You're right.
Through the chair, um, I was just gonna say, you know, when I went to the, uh. New council, new council, I know, I see Fernando nodding, because this actually came up, and I have had. You know, I've seen posts about myself, just to use myself as an example on, on things that are not real, and you know that they're troll accounts, because there's no information on there. And, um, just in, in, in reading honestly, the social media policy, to me, it seems that it doesn't align with our. You know, with what we were, uh, told at our, at our training, um, was the law, so I'm just wondering. Did our legal counsel take a look at this? Did you coordinate or collaborate with anyone, or is this just you from doing your own research?
Councilmember, when you say that, can you please be specific, like what provisions do not align? So if something that's presented to us isn't in alignment, can you be specific?
Yeah, I think, uh, it was exactly what you said, your comment prior, when it was about deleting accounts and deleting comments. Um, that people make from what, um, Fernando and I heard at our, and, and I see him nodding again in agreement, what we were told was pretty much. You have to deal with it because you're considered the government, like now that you're an elected official, you're considered the government. Um, it, yeah, I think on here it says, um, it, from what I read, it said that, uh, if somebody has like a, a fake account. It's going against the rules, that you would give a warning, I think, if it were correct.
Fake accounts are allowed to continue, um, is once they start, once a person, whether it's a real account or a fake account. Starts posting, um, against these guidelines, right, uh, threatening comments, right, solicitation of commerce. Uh, the best practice is to give them a couple of warnings as opposed to blocking them right, right away.
Yeah.
So just to clarify, we're not allowed to block folks that we, you know, council, we deem to be fake accounts or troll accounts.
Um, Mike, is this something, I mean, I would love to hear your, your legal advice.
That's what I understand, I mean, I did not, I reviewed these, um, and I reviewed the, uh, the document, uh, that had been provided, as well as the best standards. Uh, uh, documented, prepared for these types of guidelines, and, uh, yeah, I believe that this is correct. We cannot delete troll accounts, troll accounts, as long as they're not violating the other rules and regulations that we have in place. And a troll account cannot be removed just because of the fact that it is a, a troll account, so, yeah.
So then.
No, sorry, I was just gonna say that, that goes in line with what we were told.
Yeah, and I think that's what you're saying here, right? I mean, that's what the policy is, unless they're violating, now it goes into. Um, you know, those guidelines for the public sexual contact, links to sexual content, so, and all of that. And again, unless it's a violation of that, you can start doing warnings, letting them know that they can't post this. I think the other thing, uh, because this came up, maybe what, two years ago, was it, or no, a year ago, right? We didn't really have a lot of the social media policies, and I know this is when they start, we started to look at implementing social media policies. Where it's actually in our Facebook page and our social media, that these policies are contained in there, so people know what's gonna be restricted. If they're starting to make comments that violate, you know, defame someone, um, you know, they're, they're sexual in nature. Or they're violent in nature, and they're harassing or whatnot, right? So that people know this is the guidelines, and they're in our social media, those are in our social media accounts.
Correct, yes.
Okay, any other comments, Council? Okay, so if there's no comments, I think this was just a, uh, an item, informational item, so.
Through, through the chair, the only recommendation I also had is that we specifically designate who has, who on city staff has the authority to remove these. There should only be a limited number of people with the ability to do this, otherwise, if we have a variety of folks that can, uh. Implement the policies and so forth, we have the potential to run into some problems and some differences of opinion, so.
Yeah.
I think we want to make sure that we just designate two people, and make sure that two people or three people are, however many people we want to, but that they have been. Fully versed and brought up to speed on these guidelines and how to implement the same, and then, but it's clear who has that authority.
Yeah, so if you can let us know too.
I'm the city manager, as the owner of her. We'll make that determination a little bit.
And I do want to bring it back later, this is not for this, but I'll, maybe I'll do it in my comments, just to come back for a communications policy that aligns with. What are, you know, what we have in social media.
Sounds good, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So what we want for our next item on our agenda, which is, um, update on economic development programs. And I'll turn this over to our economic development director, oh, I'll turn this over to, uh, Dencia Vargas.
Good evening, um, Mayor and Councilmembers. So we're, I'm gonna go ahead and provide, um, the staff report, it's just an update on the economic development programs that we have. Which include the CDVG programs, um, through our business loan assistance program and the ARCA funding. Um, and the report, um, so just giving you a little bit of a history, um. I'm just trying to say, I don't want to take up too much of your time, but I do want to give you a little bit of background, so about three years. Um, since twenty twenty one, the city did receive three grants, and these are specifically through the CDVG program. These grants, um, provided the opportunity to assist our local businesses within the city limits in form of business loans. Um, they vary from thirty five thousand, seventy thousand, fifty thousand, and then some up to two hundred and forty five thousand. So the grants are listed as, um, the very first grant was awarded back in April of twenty twenty one. That one offered five hundred thousand dollars in spending. That five hundred dollars for each, um, just to clarify, each grant allocates funding for loans specifically. And then also for administrative assistance, and then the, what's called activity delivered, which is the underwriting and process of the actual loan itself. So for that grant, um, we were able to issue three grant loans. One to the Premier Cinema for two hundred and forty five thousand, plus a Gharabi for fifty thousand, and the Rinnmill just recently for seventy thousand. Through that specific grant. So after those three loans, we no longer have funding, we've completely exhausted all the funds. The second loan that, um, second grant, I'm sorry, that we received was the twenty CDVG CB one. And that allocated a hundred and one and three hundred and forty seven thousand dollars to the city, that was allocated in May of twenty twenty one. With that loan, uh, that grant, we were able to issue two loans, one for rooms by Jen. For thirty five thousand and solid nails for thirty, another additional thirty five. After that funding was given out, it exhausted the grant itself, so that one's done. Um, the third grant that we received was twenty CDVG CB two and three, zero zero one one nine. Which was awarded in September of twenty twenty one, and that one was for the total amount of three hundred and sixty eight thousand, nine hundred and forty three thousand. We, nine hundred and forty three, hundred dollars. That, so far, we've issued a loan for a positive clean. This is a business that has been renamed, was originally Jen's grooming, they asked for additional funding. They did, after review, we did a program for fifty thousand dollars additional in funding and loan forms. We also funded Stitcher embroidery for seventy thousand, and then just recently, we, um, funded Sandy Heard and Nail Salon for fifty thousand. Those three loans does not exhaust the grant itself, so we still have about ninety five thousand, five hundred and thirty two. Hundred dollars available, and just to give you an update, um, I just actually met with somebody this week, and they submitted an petition. And they're requesting seventy thousand. So if that gets approved, then it will obviously leave about, you know, twenty five, in fact, in there. Um, so that's our CDVG program that we have. The ARCA funds that were allocated to economic development, um, programs. We did allocate five hundred thousand for two, uh, business assistance programs, the very first one. We allocated three hundred thousand dollars for the citywide facade grant program. This isn't an actual grant, they're not loans, so they will be given, and once they're given, that's it, we're not asking for payment from the businesses. So, so far, uh, for that, we, for that. So so far, uh, for that, we, for that program, we approved twenty five thousand dollars in funding. Uh, we just approved our very first one and it's, if you haven't seen our social media, it was solid at Motel, um, at Motel Eight. So they will be getting twenty five thousand dollars for the um, to repaint their building. Um, and then we do have about three grants, there are um application, grant applications that are pending. And we actually just approved an additional one for additional twenty five thousand. And that is going to be um for the cinema, we just approved it this week. The reason they're getting the funding is because they need to resource, I know it's in a building, they need to resurface some of the. The underneath of the building because of the birds. Yeah, the the birds, they've damaged the the paint and the the stucco on the building. And then they're also gonna be getting a sign on the front of the building.
That's good.
So we're very um excited about that because they will actually, I know, don't know a lot of the feedback that we've been getting. Um, in our department is, what is it, is it a warehouse? I know they have a sign on the side, but I think it's gonna, now with um the grocery outlet being right in front of them. When you look out to the cinema, unless you see the little postboards in the light, you can't really tell sometimes what it is. So um, they're gonna be getting a nice sign on the front of their building. So the facade program allows for that, so we went ahead and approved this back just this week. And um, the other three applications that we have for the facade program are actually along Front Street. Um, it's the property right outside of Main Street. And um, I have approached others about their signage. Some that have been, they're dilapidated, broken, falling apart. So they're, they keep telling me, yes, I agree with the application, so we're hoping that. I will not stop looking at it because I think it's important for their signs to get updated, so. Um, hopefully we'll see more in the next couple months. The other program that was allocated was for the smaller uh business assistance program. And we allocated two hundred thousand dollars for that program. And so far, the ish, the the city has issued fifty thousand dollars in grants. One, the very first one that we issued was for Shaw Solid at Poleros for twenty thousand because of their income bracket where they felt that's how much they qualified for. Um, the Circuit City Family Fitness qualified for ten. Hoya Dia Reynoso for five, Reynoso y Reynoso for five thousand and then Marispos Puerto Anque received ten. After that funding is over, we have a hundred and fifty left over in the, out of the two hundred thousand. And then just to clarify, and I did not say how much was left on the other one. We have um two hundred and seventy five foot of salt still available. So that's pretty much the update that I have. Um, we are currently actively going out and reminding our business owners that they're still funding. I still talk to people, um, last week I attended the merchants association um meeting. And I spoke to several people about, you know, you, did you know that you do qualify for this program? You know, if you were impacted, especially the business assistance grant program. If they were impacted, I made them aware that, you know, you should come and talk to me and let's go ahead and see if we can get you to apply. Cause a lot of these businesses are small, you know, mom and pop businesses that could qualify for this program.
Thank, thank you, Dencia, for um for providing this. I know for me, I wanted to see the report, um, because I think it's really important for our community also to understand how. Um, how much money the city has received to be able to support our businesses. So I know this has been obviously through the span of when the pandemic started. And I know the your, uh, the team at Causa came out and that was really instrumental in applying for these COVID relief. Uh, pack of funding under CDVG and I think sometimes our community is not aware of some of these. Um, you know, the support that the city has provided to our small businesses. And so I think that was really important for our community to really know that and to know the details of of the public funds that have been, have been provided. Um, through the loan process and through some of these um businesses that were hurting. So I know, obviously, we talk a lot about the importance of really supporting our small businesses. And and I think this is really important for our community to know. Three different CDVG sources of fund that went to provide those reliefs uh for our small businesses. I just wanna make a comment in terms of our ARCA grant, cause I think that's also an important part that our community understand that the city did receive these ARCA dollars. And the council decided, you know, made a determination and approval to be able to approve funding um for our small businesses. So again, you know, the importance of the council really supporting our small businesses through through the approval of these grants. Uh, for me, I was really excited about the citywide facade program because I thought that was an opportunity for us to really make sure that we had. One-time expenditure funds that the city will never receive again through our, I mean, hopefully we do, but the the potential is that we never will. Um, through our federal government and it gives us that opportunity of one time to really make a big splash, um, if I can say that. And so I was excited to be able to, you know, I think for me, when we approved the facade program, I was really looking at this. You know, as a way that we can really help improve um or beautify our downtown. And I, you know, we see the awnings that are really dilapidated and old. Uh, we see the signage that, you know, it it's just really needs, we really need support there and the painting. Um, and that we could really stretch this money to be able to support that and make a big dent. And I'm just a little disappointed that, I mean, I'm glad that Motel Eight is gonna get painting. I mean, I think that's an an important corridor, but I was really hoping that that would happen. You know, that we would see several businesses take advantage of that and really upgrade our awnings, you know. Paint some of those buildings and maybe provide more so we could really see, so our community could see. Um, just visually, at at least starting to beautify some of these. And then the other businesses would say, hey, you know what, that looks beautiful. How can we, you know, what can I do to make sure that my building also looks the same and that we would stir some of that up? So I'm just, you know, I I know we still have money, but but I really wanna make sure, you know, at least for me, we have that opportunity to really. Clean up those awnings that are awful and paint those buildings, eh, you know, and just provide a little bit more uh TLC to our net, to our downtown corridor.
Surprised um when this one comes through, the two, the the building that's in the corner, they're applying. Um, it's just a matter, unfortunately, the application process, I don't think it's difficult, honestly, it's not, it's not, we don't ask for very much. Um, because, you know, when I speak to them, I tell them, I, we try to guide them, if anything, we hold their hand, so there's a whole process. Um, but I think that what's coming, and I'm, I'm actually very excited, I can't wait to see that building that's coming, that's gonna be painted on Front Street. And it's gonna have new awnings, the um historical feature of the actual building itself, it's gonna pop the colors, it's gonna be earthy tones. It's, it's gonna, it's really gonna update it and you're gonna see it. Um, I wanna kind of hold back on the um who's applying, but there's another one that's on downtown that we have their application, they're all coming in. Um, so, you know, just just give us a minute, they're, they're, they're coming. So I have three that are on Front Street and one that's already approaching me on on another one on Front Street. So it's, it, they're coming, it's just, I think they get, they might feel a little bit intimidated. But once they start sitting with me and with Brian and with the team, they, they're like, oh, okay, that's all you're asking for? Yes, so you know, i- it's really hard um for them to kind of do the process. Because they, it's intimidation more than anything, but um I've been able to build the relationship with the businesses and um, so.
Well, good.
It's coming.
Thank you, because that was just my disappointment, but thank you for showing that, that it's coming, cause I think that was at least, you know, some of what we wanted to see happen. And although I know, you know, it's good for premier cinemas, but you know what, that should have been done at the beginning when they. You know, when they designed that, I mean, that should have been included. I think for me was more small mom and pops because that that's our front street, so.
Yeah, and and the hotel, I think, is gonna make a huge difference because it is in an area where you drive into Solid Ed through that side. It's the, one of the first hotels that you see other than Motel Six. So um, and just let you know, those, the tones that they're using, um, we did kind of go back and forth with them. So you're gonna be, I think it's gonna be very uh pleasant to see, it's gonna be uh muted tones, it's kind of earthy tones. So it's gonna be kind of an off-white with a border of black, but then green doors. I actually, this, the owner was in Carmel in one weekend. She already had picked her her colors and she actually went to Carmel and she completely changed her color scheme. And this kind of, the color scheme that she changed to is so fitting for for Solid Ed. So it's gonna be earthy tones and it's gonna kind of upscale it a little bit. So we're excited, we did a video, if you haven't seen the video, um, we are gonna be doing doing before and after pictures. So we are promoting it, we're, um, we've been working closely with community engagement to start, you know, doing a little bit more of that. I know we have a lot of videos and stuff coming through, but um, we're excited and that, I think, once they see that one, the rest of them and then the one that's coming, it's, yeah.
Oh, good, yeah, I saw just with the painting of La Plaza, they just painted their outside. And that looks really nice, just kind of cleaning it up, so, thank you, I just wanna say, those are my comments, but thank you so much for all the work. That your team, that Economic Development has done to really support our businesses. And I just, for me, I wanted to make sure that that was highlighted for our community and understood how much funding and money and support. Um, that our small businesses have, have received from from the city, so, thank you. So I'll open it up for council, for council comments and I'll start this way, council members.
Really quick, I don't wanna take a lot of time, but I think that, you know, one of the things that uh these opportunities uh give is to talk about Solid Ed. Um, you know, I was at an event in Monterey uh last week. Uh, and in that event, uh, Miss Lopez was one of the, was one of the palace at that event. It was um a woman in business uh in uh Monterey. And she spoke about her business, her story and her family's story. But she also talked about that she was going to be the first uh recipient of the facade program in the city Solid Ed. And how the city of Solid Ed is supporting small businesses. So um, I, you know, I think kudos to you guys and and her to be talking about that story and talking about. Spreading what the city of Solid Ed is doing in in other areas. Um, and having said that, I think that the mayor is correct in regards to trying to see what we can do with that front street. Cause it does, you know, there are some some issues there. And I think that a a great example in Salinas is not on the main street downtown. That, that was the city, that was Taylor and that was a lot of other stuff. But if you look at the area there where Copimac is and uh Tacos on Beto is. That has transformed completely by changing the facade, that doesn't even look, it looks like the whole thing was built all over again and it wasn't. And it was just some minor repairs, popping of the colors and the color scheme and matching everything up. Uh, and using contrasting colors with blacks and some earth tones. And I think those are the kinds of things that we're looking for in in this program and that's, that's all I'd say.
Yeah, I just, um, I have a question about the uh the loans. So this, in the first instance, there's three loans, are those the only loans for this uh?
For that specific grant, yes.
Okay, so I'm I'm a little confused. Cause the the total for the loans makes up uh three hundred and sixty five thousand dollars, sort of five hundred thousand dollars. So do we spend a hundred and thirty five thousand dollars in fees and?
And consult, so the loan is for, you're talking about the very first one, the five hundred thousand dollar loan. So two uh, a hundred thousand dollars and thirty five, thirty five thousand dollars is administrative fee.
Uh huh.
Um, when the grant was applied for, um, I was not here yet, so the consultant could allocate that amount to them. So um, and then there's what's called activity delivery for processing of all the loans, all the work that she does. She has a certain, they have a contract with her, so basically you deduct that and that's what's available for the actual activity, which is the loan. So that's how each program works. Um, so for the second one, and I do have them broken down, um, I have to keep tabs because I have to report. For the one, like for example, the one for a hundred and one, thirty, three hundred and forty seven. That one general, what's called general administration activity delivery, which is the, again, the underwriting and all of that. Um, that loan would be seventeen thousand, two twenty eight for general administration, activity delivery fourteen thousand. And then which leaves seventy thousand dollars for the loan, for loans, I'm sorry. So that, that one we allocated to. So that's how each grant, it's, so each grant is broken down like that.
Okay.
So.
So literally one third of the grant goes.
For, it goes for working, so basically, uh, when you're talking about general administration is. I know I did pay to the city, but this, the grant allows the city to get reimbursed for my work. And for the work of the consultants, cause we're gonna pay them, but we're gonna pay them through the grant.
Thank you.
Thank you, so uh, council, uh, Mayor, go ahead.
Yeah, uh quickly, um, just wanna say thank you to uh the economic department and Ten, Tenencia for bringing this forward and. And itemizing it for us. Um, what this is though, and I want this to resonate with the community out there, and I know you're probably not listening, it's nine oh two. Um, yeah, you got something else you're doing, but there's money out there. And this shows the commitment that this council has and this community has for our small business. And they're, you know, um, don't be intimidated by the paperwork, um, you know, if anything, uh, our staff is are, is there to assist you guys. And part of it is you gotta help yourself by filling out the application. But there's, there's an opportunity here to grow your business. And so uh hopefully they'll take advantage of that in the facade program, a great idea. And hopefully that motivator or that one building will set the fire underneath the other people's, I'll say, feet. Um, and get them going as well, because we got, I mean, there's money there, let's do that and let's fuel fire downtown and. See what, see what change will be for our community and also the foot traffic as well. That's all.
Yeah, thank you, councilman.
Um, yes, I was just gonna um say thank you for for your hard work. Um, I think a lot of, you know, when I see all these uh businesses that have received uh grants and. Loans, it just makes me think that, you know, the the businesses that we were able to keep open. Uh, the jobs that that if they help create. Um, also, you know, then beautifying our city through, you know, the facade. And I have no doubt that it'll, I I know our business owners talk to each other, so I have no doubt that. That it'll, you know, catch fire and and we'll have other other uh businesses also jumping in on on that and taking advantage of it. And then just uh to bring it full circle, as I was looking through all these uh businesses that that have received funding through the city. These are the same businesses that are giving back to our community, they're giving to our sports teams, they're giving to our. Uh, you know, different campaigns having to do with health, with um, you know, uh. Just uh pretty much with with everything and it's honestly just, you know, part of why, why we do this, to help our businesses and and in return they help our our community, so thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thank you so much. And if they're not giving back, it's an opportunity to ask to give back, right? We've invested in them and they can invest back in our community members, so appreciate that, Dencia. And I just wanna say a final closing, thank you, because I don't know if the community knows this, but your department, when COVID was here. Um, not a lot of other cities, there was a lot of grants at that time. Um, a lot of our small businesses were having difficulty with it and our department, like the city. Um, determined that we were going to utilize our staff, right? To be able to complete those applications when other cities weren't doing that. So I just wanna say thank you because you were in the trenches helping them to make sure that they completed their applications to get money that the state was giving also aside. From the loans that we see here, so, thank you.
I just wanna say to those that are listening on Facebook, I just wanna be able to let them know that. You know, if there's any, I've always said it, you know, I am a community, uh, you know, a public servant, I do serve and I work for them. If it wasn't for them, I wouldn't be here. You approved uh for Brent to, when Brent was our city manager, to go ahead and create our department. You know, with uh Brian's leadership and support and the staff that we have, we've been able to do all of this work. But I wanna encourage anybody who's listening, who's watching, who's a business owner, please do not feel intimidated by the process. We are here to help you, if, like I said, if we need to hold their hand, we will do it. You know, that's what we're here for, so um, I'm very honored to work with our businesses. I'm not from Solid Ed, but I love Solid Ed as if it was my own, so.
Thank you, yeah, thank you. Oh, and let me take it out to the public because we didn't do that, so any members of the public that are still with us that want to comment on item B dash four. Okay, I don't see any, so, okay, perfect, so we'll bring it back. Um, thank you so much uh for the presentation, we appreciate that. So we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, which is item B dash five. And that's a put next to the city commissions and committees, and I will turn this over to um our interim city manager.
Mayor and city council members, this single report has two subjects that are related but separate. As background, you may recall, under public comment at the last council meeting, a member of one of your committees. Expressed concern about the difficulty of getting a. Expressed concern about the difficulty of getting a quorum. And that individual suggested that you adopt a policy that to encourage greater participation. Uh, and failing participation to come up with a policy for creating a vacancy. This report addresses that issue. Secondly, uh, and council asked us to come back with that. Secondly, council also asked us to come back with an opportunity for you to discuss the appointment process itself. We first discussed the vacancy issue. One of your committees, our planning commission, has a specific provision within the ordinance establishing the the planning commission. Uh, that provides that members can be removed for failure to attend meetings. That action will require, however, a specific resolution by the city council to remove those individuals. We recommend, and and if you adopt this recommendation, uh. We'll have to come back with figure out how, what what resolution or ordinances need to be changed to adopt this recommendation. Uh, but we recommend that you establish a policy that doesn't require any action by the council to remove somebody. Its removal is automatic when they have not. Uh, when they have missed two consecutive meetings or free meetings in a year that are unexcused. That will derive options in here. You could establish different numbers or uh, uh. Or the process by which a vacancy is uh, declared. But our suggestion is that no further council action would be necessary if commission, maybe members or commissioners, uh, committee members, excuse me. Uh, did not attend because of an unexcused absence of two consecutive meetings or three in a single year. The second topic uh, was that you were asked to consider was committee process, the appointment process itself. Uh, as you know, that's established uh, in some instances in the code, that is for the planning commission. And or in the council's rules and procedures that establish that the mayor appoints subject to. Uh, we approve all the city council. There have been occasions when the whole council has determined that you want a different process for a specific ad hoc committee. Such as the general planning advisory committee or recently the district committee. Uh, council wanted the opportunity to discuss that process and to see whether any revisions are necessary. Uh, we recommend no re- uh, revisions, but uh, this here, the report is here, so you can review those issues in terms of whether you want any changes. So, there are any questions, but that concludes this time.
Thank you. And so let me take it out to the public and then I'll bring it back to council and members of the public that wish to comment on item B dash try. Any members that are joining us, be of. Okay, see none. So then I'll bring it back to the council um, for comments on the uh, report that we have uh, before us. So I will start with mayor.
Yes, thank you, mayor. Uh, yeah, my thoughts uh, are are similar to what the uh. Staff recommended. It says if it ended at seven, uh, misses two to three. Unexcused, I I think two would be appropriate, three maybe if everybody's okay with that. Um, and not giving any kind of reason why. I think for city business, we gotta continue to move forward. So therefore, I think that. Uh, we should be able to just do that uh, uh, qualifying factor or disvolifying factor, uh, be able to. Lose his spot or lose her spot and uh, council be notified and then we have to uh. Come up with the another appointment to replace the individual. Uh, because you know, it's difficult. You get committed people and you get people that. Don't really wanna do the commitment once they see what the commitment entails. And so, uh, I think that's appropriate. And then secondly, uh, the appointment of a individual like planning commissioners per council member. Um, I think is a great idea. Uh, I think that, you know, we can uh, look to uh, go out there and solicit individuals to. To uh, be appointed. And then also the onus would be on the individual uh, council member to replace that individual if if they uh, vacate the position. Um, so I'm good with that recommendation, so.
Thank, thank you, Mayor Potam. Uh, council.
Um, yes, I I think I'm um, I'm in agreement with um, council member in minutes. I think that, you know, um. What's it called? We should, we should have something in in place where we could remove someone if if they don't give an excuse. As an excuse for why they couldn't come to me. I think the suggestion from staff was two to three days of an an excuse that days. I'm fine with the two, I think, we're not in. You know, we're grown adults and we have a city, a city to run and, you know, even in hearing. I think her name was Isabel Miss, I remember if I remember correctly, who gave that the public comment. Um, you know, I'm sure it's it's disheartening for her because she signed up for something, she's probably fired up, wants to make the difference and. You know, we, you know, I think we owe it to her and others who do want to, you know, to do what they signed up for to make it to or don't think three is necessary. Um, and then when it comes to the planning commission, I believe um, council member Cabrera had mentioned that. Uh, at one of the meetings that we had, one of the last meetings, that he, uh, you know, would like it to be. By council appointment and I am totally fine with that. I think that's a great idea.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, to clarify, I think what uh, the recommendation was, it's, you know, two in a row, unexcused. And when we're talking about a year, we're talking about three in a year unexcused. So, just to clarify that, but and so I'm okay with that. That to be able to do that. So, if you have three in excuse in a year, you know, you're 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 gone as well. Um, and that that that's that's a simple process, I think, that would wouldn't have to take uh, council time to. Try to figure out what, you know, are we gonna get rid of this person or not? And it becomes a a public issue rather than it's just a policy issue. It's just a lot simpler to just go ahead and do that. And the same thing for me, I'm I'm good with uh, you know, what uh, council member I brought up at the last meeting. Of looking at that possibility of, you know, moving in that direction of. Doing the uh, appointments of the planning commission by the uh, individual council members. I'm good with that.
Thank you, Councilor Chavez. Councilor Chavez again.
Um, well. I'm sorry, that's just in my thoughts. Um, I agree, but I think that is, uh, two is enough. Because if two miss, if they're missed, two is enough to to uh, let go because three is three months, they meet monthly, right?
Whatever, I think what the recommendation was, let's say they missed December and then they miss, you know, in a fiscal year, they miss December, then it's February, then they miss. Uh, in April, so those are three, three.
But but still it's three, so there's a uh. If uh, they missed and they don't have quorum, then they cannot do anything in three months. So, it is, it is a lot of uh, meetings. Three missing, three meetings. So, I uh, I'm I'm good with three, but I would like to see two uh, implemented. And when it comes to um, recommending one, each one of us, I think it is important that we consider the fact that we're going into. Uh, districts and we have to, I don't, I I think that we also have to consider other. Other options like for the general plan room, which we uh, added more people that are um, included. I think that is important to include not not, not only people from the different districts, but also uh, people from different segments of this uh, um, population. And um, just uh, in one, going over that before, I believe that there is no. There is no committee for the.
Historic Resource Commission.
Mm-hmm, and the uh, Parks and Recreation, I believe, Parks and Recreation, there's uh. Is it, is that, is that what the case, the one that is not, that is not active?
That's our understanding. We actually had quite a considerable time trying to find the origins of this committee. It's morphed into several different roles over the years. Apparently it started out as a design committee of only two members of the council. How those people said, hey, let's get some citizens involved. And so then came two members of council, plus some citizens. Uh, and with it, and then it's been, uh, it has not been active uh, in recent years. If it is to be, if you want it to be an advisory committee, then our recommendation is that it truly be a community advisory committee. Uh, not involving council members on it.
Yeah. Will that be part of the uh, uh. Will that include, um, I think it's done by uh, the community center or just?
It could. We really didn't give you any specific recommendations out of there. I think the question that you may be raising is, does the council want to revivify? Turn it back to life, the Parks and Recreation Committee? And if so, we need it, you should probably do so formally through a resolution that establishes its. Yes, duties and responsibilities.
Yeah, I I I, I think that that part could be uh, different from this. And I just wanna make it, make sure that that we um, look into it and to this a little bit uh, more in detail because. Uh, there are concerns in us, in our um, community that they um. There's some issues with how the parks are being assigned and used and that there is no people that are that can contribute with their ideas. We had, uh, I had a couple of families telling me that um. The community, community center is requiring proof of residence to them. And that they're telling them that the police uh, department is gonna check on their their residents, uh, um.
Well, the first part is definitely true. That's that's. Second part is news to me, so.
Yeah, so uh, there's been a couple of uh, um, families that told me that. They were told that they have to provide approval of residence and that police uh, department was gonna be checking on them, on their status.
So, so, uh. Councilor, thank you for sharing that. So I think what we can do, if I hear your recommendation or what you're saying correctly is to be able to bring. Back the Parks and Recreation Committee discussion at a later time, so we can talk about. You know, do we wanna resurrect it? How, what's the composition? What does it look like? When are they gonna meet? We can establish all of that criteria. So. Okay, so we will bring that back then for for further discussion, but any other comments on the other items besides that? Okay, perfect. Okay, council, well, thank you. I just have a couple of clarifications. Cause I think for me, I mean, I'm okay, I'm definitely uh, in agreement and and thank you, Isabel. I know Isabel was my appointee and. I know she's been really frustrated uh, going to these meetings. And so, um. I I think, you know, I I just wanna make sure that we're clear because especially for the measure Y and the measure S committee, I think it's really important to define. How many times do they meet? Cause I think we've had this discussion before and they're only meeting twice. You know, they can't miss twice, but I think it's important to determine that. And I I think in the past, we talked about. When do, when do, when do they meet? And I think the council has had discussion about, hey, these are important, we need to get, these are important. Um, you know, committees that we want feedback from our community and these are the representatives that do that. So. It's not okay to just meet twice a year during the the budget.
Yeah.
Discussion. And so I think it's important also to go back and look at, can they meet? I don't want them, I mean, it's not okay to meet just twice a year during the budget workshops. They have to really be able to meet more times. And if we can define that before we say, hey, you. Two, two, um, two meetings, especially for those. I think the other ones, I think they have more regular meetings, but. On the measure Y and the measure S, if we can clarify that.
And there's some background. So, measure S committee meets four times a year accordingly. And that's been the challenge that was raised by your appointee. So, we've got a set schedule. To meet four times a year and yet we still can't get a quorum. With respect to measure Y committee. Uh, I do not believe they have a set schedule of meetings, but one of their challenges, because they don't have a quorum, they need to have a chair to call them.
Okay, so can we define then, if we're meeting with measure S, and I think both of them were approved within the sales tax kind of. Um, you know, public citizens, uh, appointee committee, can we make sure that we have. They're gonna meet four times a year as well. And then that way, the applicability of the two absences, I think, applies then for both of the committees. Yeah, and so, that, you have a, is it similar to this? Cause I have one more comment. Yeah, so I just that, I just wanna make sure that we're clear on that. Um, and then my other, so so I'm good with that. And then the other one is, um. The planning commission. So I I'm okay with it being, you know, each member of the council, since I've been on the board, it's always been, you know. I mean, we never really had a a transition of our planning commissioner, probably only twice. And the last, I've been here for what, six years? Seven, going on seven. Um, so I don't know how often, you know, that changes, but I just wanna clarify, my, where we're going to the redistricting process. Will that planning commission, the way it typically now is, um, the provisions that we currently have, is it still gonna apply? I mean, how is the redistricting going to impact the way the planning commission now is selected?
I don't think that it'll impact it at all unless that's what the council decides it wants to do. I think that, you know, it 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 would definitely, if we're gonna make a change as a result of the districting, we would have to make a change to the ordinance itself. Because the ordinance doesn't contemplate, obviously, appointing by district or anything along those lines, so.
Okay, so we would just have the number of appointees in each of the council members and the mayor gets to make an appointment.
In in theory, you'll have, you know, a council member from each district, right? And so they will appoint somebody. Probably from their own district, right?
Okay, so we just have to kind of uh, assign how that's gonna happen, right? So the next, if we have a vacancy in the next year, then who is the first? Uh, council member that selects or makes that appointment?
Well, it would still continue just to be, it would still continue just to be on a council person basis, not where they're located, right? So if there's a vacancy, then the the council member who makes the appointment. But we're gonna have to change the whole process because we haven't. I mean, we're gonna have to go and change the ordinance now, because the ordinance doesn't allow for, um, the ordinance requires a resolution. If the council wants to remove somebody for uh, absences and so forth on the planning commission. So we're gonna have to make a change there. And then if we're gonna make a change in the way that folks are appointed, we'll change it for the time being until otherwise notified. That each council member has the ability to appoint somebody to the uh, planning commission. And then if 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 the districting has an impact on that, we'll make a change when when necessary.
Yeah, cause I'm just a little kind of trying to like.
Time.
Time wise, exactly. I'm just trying to formulate that in my head. When is the next, next, who is the next council member that gets to appoint? I made my appointment as a mayor. Under this provision, but if we're gonna change it, then, you know, who is it? Is it Mayor Potam? Is it, you know, cool? Because we're gonna, it's gonna change. So I think that has to be clearly defined as well.
Right.
Yeah. Mayor Potam, you see, you you expressed that you wanted to say something?
I lost it. It's in a moment there. Uh, you know, a a couple items of that says with uh, with what she mentioned right now, that in the event that. Once the four-year term ends for the the current um, planning commissioners, then um. We take a look at the areas uh, that we want to come from. I I think that with the, with the council members, as well as that, um. How are we gonna rotate it? Uh, probably same way as you're presently, I I would recommend that we rotate it similar to like we're rotating until we have districts. Um, the the vice mayor position. Then, you know, that the next one will get the next one if they fall off, but we're gonna get districting in uh, twenty twenty-four.
Yeah.
So, so we might not have it, so.
If we follow that, at least for the time being.
For the next, um.
Two years.
Three years, two years?
Year.
Year. Okay, okay. Yeah, so did you get that, Mike?
Oh, oh, yeah. Um, no, I I mean, I understand what you're saying now. I mean, I've sort of scratched my head, sort of, I I was trying to come up with what the language is gonna look like. And that is gonna be an interesting thing when all of a sudden we switch over to everybody gets to point one and who gets to be the first guy and who so forth. Yeah. Draw straws, I don't know. We'll figure out some way to do it. So, but I'll I'll uh.
Yeah, that's what I was.
I'll look what the language should be.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'll also ask our, our districting consultant as to whether or not he's dealt with the issue of, or she's dealt with the issue of. Um, impacts on appointments and so forth after the districting actually.
And the other uh, item I had in there was uh, pertaining to the S and Y committee and the discussion we had previous meetings was that. Uh, staff, and this is, this is what I'm getting from the members of those committees, that. Uh, wasn't really aware I was on the committee. We reported, I haven't received anything. So we had talked about that notification that they're, that they're, they're on the committee now. And then also uh, the scheduled uh, meeting dates. And then thirdly, a little uh, orientation for them, you know, just a couple hours and. Bring them in and say, hey, here's the history of it. This was passed in this year. This is your role. This is what you do. This is, you know, your responsibilities. And I. So we appointed these people on these committees, but we said, here, you're on the committee.
Yeah, well.
And it's like, whoa, what was it?
Yeah, and I guess it depends on each of the council members, right? Cause I know I I sat with Isabel and explained to her what it was, but I think it's hard, right? Sometimes we have to do that, because we might not all know. And so I like that. I know the last time we talked about onboarding, right? So when people, when they come.
Yeah.
When they come and they're part of a committee, hey, let's sit down then. So when people, when they come, when they come and they're part of a committee, hey, let's sit down, that staff is sitting with them to be able to do that onboarding, letting them know. So I think that's really important and hopefully that helps us to maintain some of those members that may not, you know, drop off. And also the establishing the meeting, the, the the meeting dates in, in advance, so they know, hey, if you're gonna plan vacation, these are the dates that you're gonna be there. So that they have, you know, that, that already in advance.
Yeah, and if we're gonna identify a department that does that, who's gonna do that? Brian's department, whatever department that is, with the different areas depending on which, which, whether it's a Y or S or, let's say, well, obviously. Then it's assigned and it gets done. Because last time we talked about it, it's gonna get done. And it just, and it's not obviously on the interim city manager's watch, uh, it's watch, but um it was on the previous, um, just didn't happen.
Yeah.
So that may help with the absences, that may help with that. And they might turn around and say, hey, uh.
I, I agree with that, because I think for me, one of the things that I did when they were asking me, I said, well, Darlene, Darlene knows, right? But Darlene said, yeah, I already had notified them. So I think it's important to be able to identify, hey, when they come to us, hey, I didn't have, nobody notified me. Okay, well, I know what department needed to notify you. And it's easier for us to say, and, you know, they didn't get notified by this department. So if we can identify that, I think that would be good too.
But just not the notification, the onboarding as well and commitment in the backdrop to it, whether we have a fact sheet or something like that.
Just one technical uh thing for the, for the chair. I know we, for years, have been calling this Measure Y, but technically, I think it's Measure I now. So I'm just wondering, since that was, it was Measure Y when it first started, and then we did an extension.
Oh.
And it sunsets in twenty thirty-five, and pretty positive is Measure U. And I've, I've mentioned it before, and I've brought it up before.
So can we have our city manager make sure, our interim city manager make sure we have the correct, so we know.
Well, but the note to Mr. Chavez is, notice that our report says it's the expenditure of Measure Y slash I, sales tax funds. He's made this point to me before. However, the resolution that we referenced, it does refer to it as the measure Y.
Okay, so it's measure, so we go say, cause I say Measure Y and Measure S, so we can say Measure I and take out the Y.
We should look at, yeah, we'll take a look at the origins. We'll take a look at the origins too, as to whether or not when we adopted Measure I, it was meant to supplant and rename it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
I know it means anything, but.
Yeah, it means something. So Measure Y was a temporary sales tax, and Measure I extended, but still temporary.
Right.
Yeah, for twenty thirty-five, we had a sensitive date. Yeah, and then we, yeah, so.
You know, we can also contact Mike, because when we're actually collecting the funds, they will be under
Oh, yeah.
The, the state auditor will say they're either Measure I or Measure Y or Measure S or whatever. So we should use whatever that official designation is. I, I just wanted to. Yep, you're great. All right.
Through the chair, there's the question. So do we have to pass a resolution or, or vote on the resolution to remove the um, what's it called? Uh, in order to implement the, the absence, the unexpressed absence?
I think it would be appropriate to have a, a mo- a motion, and then that will give direction to the staff to come back with the changes that would be necessary. Right, cause we have different, there's different authorities that set what the, the, the terms are and how people are nominated. So for the, for instance, the planning commission, we're clearly gonna have to do an ordinance for Measure Y and Measure S or Measure I. Uh, we, we can probably get away with a resolution as opposed to an ordinance. We're not changing the actual language of the ordinance.
Okay, so I, so for, for today though, we provide approval, recommendation to go.
Yeah, just when you provide a direction to, I don't even think that you need to take a vote other than to, you provide a direction for us to bring this back to you as necessary. Of dissent. Right.
Yeah, okay, so.
We have it, yeah.
So we have a consensus that we provide recommendations on what we'll discuss and moving forward. Okay. And then I will come back to the councils, right?
Yes.
Well, we have to make those official changes, yeah.
Perfect, perfect. With all of, I just wanna make sure Mayor Potem's all of those discussion items that he put in there, the notification, identification of the department, the onboarding, the scheduled meetings, um, and the fact sheets and all that is included as part of the discussion. As part of the recommendation.
Yeah, I mean, maybe we can put that in the, the resolution in terms of just, I mean, the notification and so forth like that. That's sort of the way that we've been handling how to address issues associated with both Measure S and Measure Y is we've done it by way of resolution, sort of establishing the, the process by which we appoint people to those committees and so forth. So we can include some notification language and so forth in those. So, okay.
Okay, perfect. Um, okay, well, thank you, Council. So, um, thank you for bringing this back. So we will now uh move on to our next item on our agenda. And at this time, it's council member uh to report. And so I'll start with my report. Um, just wanted to let you know that I did attend the Cal City's Housing and Community Development Policy Committee on um, on March sixteenth. There was a lot of discussion in terms of housing bills. I'm not gonna go through all of them. Uh, but I do wanna just mention one to the council, and obviously they're still going through the committee process for approval as part of the Senate set, as part of the, the legislative session. But there was a bill by SBA thirty-four by Cortantino who's uh bringing this bill in terms of Housing California Family Home Construction and Home, Homeownership Bond Act of twenty twenty-three. I know this council has talked about, you know, be, being able to provide more opportunities for our, our residents to become homeowners. So this, this bill would actually allocate twenty-five million as part of the state general obligation bond law to be able to help to do that. So I just wanna put it out there, cause I think that, that's really important as part of our discussions. And then I know I'll talk um more in terms of our future agenda items of how do we establish a process to bring um to council approval of different bills that we wanna support through this process of the legislative session. Um, so there was a lot of, of discussion on that. And I think those were the notable ones that I wanted. There's a lot of land, land use and zoning. Um, also, there's another one, ACA, ACA ten, which creates a new legal obligation, which is part of a constitutional amendment. Uh, but this is uh by um Hany, and this is a fundamental human right to housing. So this would declare that the state recognizes that a fundamental human right to adequate housing for everyone in California would make it a shared obligation of the state and local jurisdictions to respect, protect and fulfill the right uh by the appropriate means to be able to do that. So these are the two bills that I think are really important. Obviously, they're still going through the legis- the, the legislature. Um, and then on the, the seventeenth and the eighteenth, I shared with the council that I've attended the water education for Latinos and it's part of a cohort that um I, I paid for myself, because I wanted to make sure that I understood more about water. And, and I've been getting a lot of information. But one of the things that I do wanna say, and I wanna highlight the city's effort on receiving the fifteen million of recycled water for our recycled water project, because that has been a, a big discussion throughout the course that I'm taking is, you know, absolutely, there's different ways that we need to be able to look at uh our water and recycled recapture and conservation are, are really key. So I just wanna say, you know, we talk about Saladette being a leader, fifteen million from the state for the recycle water project is pretty amazing. So just wanna say thank you to staff for, for moving that forward and for applying for those grants. Um, and then on three twenty-two, I attended the homeless, um, the C O C series training on the coordinated entry system. I know um, Tensia was also there and as part of the, as part of the leadership for the homeless coalition. So they discussed just a lot of the entry um systems in terms of being consistent in community-wide processes to be able to everybody share the same mechanisms to um, to enter data that's needed for these, the funding mechanisms. And then on, on the twenty-second, I met with Maury Trele from Tri-City. So we're discussing a community cleanup, but also a relocation of the Butterfly Garden on April twenty-second on our first day. So once we have more information, I'll send that information to the council who wants to participate. Then uh all, all of us participated on the city manager's interview on the twenty-seventh. And then on the twenty-eighth, I attended the Main Street Middle School Career Day and also Sombi Stent Elementary. So just wanna shout out to the teachers and the students. And everyone that attended, there was a lot of participation from our city as well. And then today, we had the Monterey County Mayor's Association with meeting with Supervisor Lopez. Uh, we just got an update from our C A O Sonia and Dela Rosa regarding some of the flood updates. One of the items that um came up, they're looking at the, they had their budget workshops yesterday. The county had their budget workshops. They're gonna continue to do that. Um, and they're looking at a recommendation of approval of some of their budget items on May twenty-third. So it's the first of other uh workshops that the county's gonna have. And I recommend that if the um, the council's able to attend and, you know, there's a lot of obviously other projects, but even provide comment, I know that we say we need more representation in South County to be able to just make comments on what, what we need as well. And they did talk about a, a support letter. And I'll get that and then uh work with Ed to see how, if we bring it back to uh consideration for the next council meeting. But this is for um the San Antonio and San Antonio Dam, the reservoirs and also um Nasi Miano. Um, it's a pretty extensive project, a hundred and sixty million dollars. Um, they're looking at uh obviously other mechanisms that it's gonna require Prop two eighteen um passage. One of the discussion items was that for our residents, cause I think it was important for us to know how much that would cost our residents if it was approved through the Prop two eighteen process. It would be minimal because it's per, per acre cost. So I think they said it's like under ten dollars a year. It's more costly to individuals that have have larger acreage. Um, and those are, I think those were the most, um, oh, and they asked Supervisor Lopez to thank you to the city of Solidad and Greenfield for having the donation drive for our residents, um, for residents, for our individuals from Pahado, for our families from Pahado. Um, and I think I think that was kind of the critical items. I know there's other legislation that they're moving forward and asking cities to support, and there's more to come on that. So I am, that concludes my report, and I'll turn it over to Councilmember Chavez.
I uh don't have uh anything uh to report. I know that uh the South Southern Valley Broadband Authority will be meeting, I believe, in two weeks, so.
Councilmember Gavina?
Uh, no, I don't have any. Just um, I visited uh Mr. Ossler last, last week, and I, I was there for uh first and second period. And I'm planning to go probably next um after spring break for the later classes, once I stop working in that time. But it was wonderful. I'm, I'm planning to make, make a presentation so they can visualize what I taught them. See if uh that works.
Great, thank you. So I'll turn it over to uh Councilmember Coralejo.
Um, yes, I uh have just a couple of things. Um, I attended the career day last week uh at Main Street Middle School, and that was real encouraging just to see the energy of, of the kids. And now I have a, a little group of, of boys that wanna be mechanics that wanna come to the shop. So we're trying to host that uh and make that possible. And also, I'm just wanna give uh thanks to uh Councilmember Ortiz from the city of Greenfield for reaching out to me um in order to uh to invite the city of Solidad to do the Pahado donation. Um, she was real adamant um about doing this, uh our cities partnering and our South County cities as well. And I guess the, the difference is that she said that the items that she's asking for is more like cleaning items. A lot of people can't stay in their home yet because of mildew or mold issues. So uh, you know, they need masks, they need cloths, they need eyewear. Um, it's, you know, pretty much a, an immediate need that they have. So I invite the community, our businesses, who always come through. Uh, if you're able to, to please come and uh donate here at City Hall. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Council, uh, Mayor Potem, you may next.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I attended the Southern Valley Authority uh virtual uh because of the the issues with the floods. Um, when things were presently working on the, um, the budget, going through the process. Um, and um one that, so I'll keep it short. And one of the other ones is that we're having our schedule for our cleanups here in Solidad with the Tri-Cities. One of them is designated, I saw on there, says uh Mayor's bringing up on four fifteen, something like that, for sometime in April.
Oh, yeah, no, that's canceled.
So I wanted to share with any of the other council members that if you'd like to have a cleanup in your area, let me know, cause we get four per year. That's, you know, on behalf of them. And so we can kinda like coordinate that with them. So we could have, you know, council member for the levels and then Chavez and, and. If you get my age, you forget that. So, so we, we can coordinate that as well, and get some spirits. So uh, and then the ACAPS know nothing.
Yeah, thank you. Um, thank, thank you, Mayor Potem, for that. So I just really quickly on that note, I know, just so, so I know it's canceled for the mayor's beautification. This is something that I've been doing with Tri-City since two years ago. And really, the focus was in our dam, in our older part of Solidad to really make sure that it's more of a neighborhood cleanup. So we had planned it a year ago, and unfortunately, I'm not gonna be able to do it. So it's it's been canceled, but we're doing something different. Yeah, but thank you for noting that. Um, okay, so let's move on to council member praises. And so I'll start with uh Mayor Potem.
Um, Lily, start it up again. I just wanna praise the, the parents and the players. And also again, to caution everybody going down Gobi on Street. I know in the past, we blocked down that street. It's not blocked anymore again. So um, you know, if we could get staff to reach out to the league and coordinate. So it's, it's the street in between the two parks, it may not be forgotten. But it's, you can see the kids running across and going on. And so uh if we could get that done, and because we got a lot of kids out there right now. And it's great to see, you know, the parks and and the light, lighting's going up all over town and really nice. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Coralejo?
Uh, yes, I wanted to uh give praises to Cindy and Jorge from the Downtown Street Team. Uh, my headband, I had the pleasure of meeting them. Um, today, they have thirteen volunteers and they're cleaning up the um I guess the uh area, the encampment area, not dislocating anybody, just uh going and cleaning up. They have a little forty yarder. They said by ten o'clock, they are full. Um, but to me, one of the reasons besides them doing this for us that I want to uh give them praises is because they have, um, it's them two, Cindy and Jorge, and they have thirteen volunteers with them. These volunteers were previously unsheltered uh individuals. And so what their nonprofit does is um, they, they work with them and they give them resources. So they'll give them food, housing, um, sometimes vocational training, whatever it is that they need. And of course, I had to ask, um, you know, if they could offer these uh services as well to our, to our unsheltered. And they did tell me that they have two persons uh currently uh that are interested in, in, in going through the program. Uh, and then I think lastly, uh, they really, uh, just the smiles of all the volunteers. Um, I had a, a lady telling me a little bit about her life that was out there. She was, I think, getting ready to get her, her apartment uh for the first time in years uh this weekend. Just honestly, the, the smiles that that I saw in everybody's face, I was very, I could tell that they had a hard life. Uh, they were very respectful, very cheerful. I'm just very very grateful. So just want to uh thank, thank them.
Thank you. And I will turn it over to Councilmember Chavez.
Um, yeah, I think the other, uh, I think we, I think both council member, uh, he mentioned what I mentioned, folks. I think the other uh is the Solidad Rec District for the softball. You know, and, and girls that are out there uh playing. Um, I know, I think we got invited to be there for opening day. Was not available, but um I think that, I wanna praise them and praise all of the, the kids that are participating, all the different sports and different activities here in our area. And as far as the Downtown Streets team, uh, they're amazing. That team is, is amazing. They just helped out in our area over where I work in Selena. So they were out there. We cleaned for an hour.
Yeah.
We had uh their team plus our volunteers and a number of people. Uh, we had over close to thirty-five people that helped out. And we did about probably about twelve blocks. Uh, and we did thirty-five bags of garbage at that, at that time period. Uh, and that's just stuff that sometimes you didn't even notice it's there, but it's all, it's there. And so, you know, I, I, I praise all, all these folks.
Thank you. And Councilmember Gavina?
Wow, a big list this day. I wanna praise, I, I wanna start with the, the soccer league. There's a lot of games uh this past weekend. Uh, they've been doing the practice and they have uh children from three to four, five to six, and that, no. Five and six, seven to eight, no, four and five, six and seven and eight tonight. And um one thing that uh they're doing really good is that they found uh different sponsorship. So all their uniforms for those kids are for free. The parents don't have to pay anything for that. And we encourage more people to come and, and, and participate. Uh, we have a lot of spaces for, for children, those ages. Uh, the parents and a lot of volunteers are making this happen along with uh the organizers. One of them is uh Señor Chava. And I praise them. I also wanna praise the, uh, our middle school. They took uh the children to San Jose State University. I also wanna praise the uh our middle school, they took uh the children to San Jose State University a couple of weeks ago, about a week ago. And it was special for me because that's my alma mater. And my son had the opportunity to go, and I asked him if he was gonna attend my alma mater. He said, probably not. But it was, it's it's a good start when uh um my belief is that when you, when you take children to the universities and they can see themselves, visualize themselves in that university, it is more likely that they will seek um uh to go to school. Um the last thing is uh Celebration Nation. Celebration Nation is an organization that has been very active in our uh valley, uh providing food distributions in all the cities, uh Gonzales, Solidad, Greenfield, and King City. And this particular weekend, weekend, uh they're gonna be distributing food on the eighth and and other presents for for children, and um they've been doing a lot of work. Uh sometimes they don't have people to volunteer to do that, and and the work multiplies, but uh they they still um they have uh canceled me a couple of times because of rain. But other than that, every every other weekend or every weekend there in one of our cities providing uh support for our families that need food and other services.
Thank you, um Councilmember Gavera for that. And just love to piggyback on on the Celebration Nation, just to let our community know, they've been here since the pandemic. When the pandemic happened, they started to come out and they started to provide food, especially for our farmworker uh families. So they've been here since then, um just committed month after month. And Flor Martinez, who's the organizer, um works really close, also with Martha Seta, who's one of our community members here, got recognized um as, you know, Women's History Month because of all the work that she does. And it's not just in Solidad, it's in Salinas, it's in um Oxnard, it's in, I mean, they just go all over, all over. So I wanna just congratulate her as well, thank you for bringing that up. I wanna congratulate also the team that put together the cleanup. Um so this was obviously a discussion that we had before, but I also wanna thank Ed because he was um part of our our team in the city of Solidad to really make sure that we're pushing this along. Thank you, Roxanne Wilson, for making sure that this uh did happen. So this was a collaborative uh effort with the county, um with Tri-Cities, who was who, you know, was able to donate the dumpster, I don't know if they donated, but they they had their dumpsters out there, and I know the county, this is part of the the payment, I think, was um through some of the funding through the county to be able to pay for the cleanup process. And so I think during the discussion, I know Downtown Street Teams, because they've had done great work in the city of Salinas. So I wanted to recommend that they be the ones to come out here, because they needed a special um they needed a special, you you know, people to come out, not just any volunteers because of the nature of what's in there. So I'm glad that they were here, they were instrumental, they did amazing work um as part of their their process as well. So just wanna do a shout out to the county, to Roxanne Wilson, for all the tremendous work that she does in Tri-Cities and everyone else um that helped this and our team led by Ed too as well. I wanna say congratulate, you know, I I really wanna give recognition to our seventh and eighth graders at Main Main Street Middle School, especially from Mister Bosler's class. So I know you all got the, you know, letters as we as I did. Um but I, you know, I wanna say their ideas, I mean, gun violence, as we've seen again this week um continues to plague our 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 nation and our and our cities. Um and I know one of the things that I read about, you know, mayors and council members, what are they worried about? Now they instead, you know, we we also, we have to worry about the infrastructure parks and all of that. But along with that now is, you know, hopefully this doesn't happen to us, right? And the worry is that who's next? And nobody is, um you know, nobody's spared from this. So I know one of the things that I I really wanna do, and I want to make sure that, you know, hopefully as a council, we can come back and discuss it. But under the civic engagement, these these students uh at Main Street Middle School talked about a couple of ideas that they wanted to have. And what was a town hall to really address gun violence? And talking about what are some of the solutions? They talked about a gun uh buy gun buyback program, really raising awareness. So for me, as part of the engagement, I told them I was committed to be able to work with them and to be able to work with the city and other partners to make sure that we we have a town hall, and I think if we do it in unification as a council, um I think it would be really powerful, working with our, um you know, with our our Solidad Youth Council, including our seventh and eighth graders and making them part of the process and them understanding that government government works for them um and showing them that we do this and and that it's not just showing up, but it's actually doing something. So um just to to, you know, wanted to share that with you. And um my other, my other congratulations is to Vanessa, um let me see ahead of here. Vanessa Aguilar, who's from Solidad, and she was selected to play for the under seventeen Mexican national team. I think it was last week where she was out um doing that. So I just wanna say, Vanessa, we're proud of you, congratulations. Her mom, Jose Andilla, her sisters, and you think she's a great role model. Uh we have many great youth role models, so just wanna say congratulations that we have such incredible athletes in the city of Solidad. And we can hopefully, you know, we, not hopefully, but we continue to be amazed by them and to support, you know, to support our young athletes that, you know, are incredible. Uh coming from our community is just amazing to see. So shout out to her and her parents for um for this amazing, you know, tribute where Solidad, you know, she took Solidad out to uh to the nation. So really, um they just wanna make sure I praise her for that. Okay, so we'll move on to city managers.
Can I do one more?
Okay, one more quick, because it's already gonna be ten.
Yeah, just wanna say. I wanted to add one thing about Vanessa is that she's she's playing in France next, uh I think it's this year at the end with the national team. And we had another person that went to uh from the high school, went to to play in the Pumas, an university, a national tournament in Mexico. So we have a lot of young um athletes that are uh making them putting solid in the map. Lastly, I wanna also remind everybody out there that are that are uh seniors in high school that Cardinal College has a wonderful program for you guys. It's called the the Salinas Valley Promise. And this this program provides you with uh um they pay for the tuition and books for two years, and they give you also a computer so you can work. And that is, there's a lot of wonderful programs that you can that you can utilize and 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 be part of it. So make sure to make to do all the FASPA uh application um and enroll in that program for next to go into Harna for two years.
Yeah, thank you. And just as as just as a note, the city, actually the council, uh every budget year from for the last probably three, four years has been supporting the promise, the uh Salinas Valley Promise, yeah. So more investments in our community and our youth, so thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to our next items, uh city manager's report. There's any questions? I know that we, everybody was able to read it. Is there any questions?
I wonder whether I could, I have three or four things I'd like to make available to the council and the community. First, to join the council members who thanked the partnership that was engaged in the in the governor encampment cleanup. There is one more day of work tomorrow. Um but I wanted to share additionally, both the the mayor and council member Corleal talked about the the assessment process for assessing the needs of the homeless people. Jorge and Cindy Maria are caseworkers, and they're gonna bring an additional caseworker tomorrow. They have a a good rapport with the campers. And as you indicated, two, but maybe more, uh are if they go through the proper assessment process can be referred to the Coalition of Housing uh Services Agencies. And they'll be connected with a variety of services, and some of them are even interested in finding housing outside of the camp. So that's uh bringing in the downtown uh uh streets team was very helpful in that regard, not just cleaning up, but making connections with the the folks who are down there and getting the services they need. Uh there was discussion tonight about legislation. It was our hope to be able to bring to the city council at your next meeting on the nineteenth a proposed legislative platform. This was something our, recall our legislative advocate suggested. Because that would allow us, if we had a proper platform in place, then we could take uh action, the positions on various legislation without having to wait for the next council meeting and and can move on. However, uh April twelfth, some of the council members are attending the League of California Cities Meeting about legislation
Yeah.
along with Jesus. And so given the time to prepare the staff report in time for the nineteenth, and secondly, the council's request that the nineteenth be a light agenda. This legislative platform will probably come back to in May. Uh uh now I'm gonna give you some dates that are very important. Uh you know that the Council Trans has been working for months on the bridge to rehabilitate the bridge. Four nights in May, high northbound one-on-one is gonna be closed. And traffic off the freeway will be detoured through Solidad on Front Street. They've noticed that there's been some tree trimming going on, that's Council Trans taking care of our trees so that the truck traffic and coming through town doesn't disrupt us. We've advised all the businesses along there of the general notion that it's coming. And now we have some dates that are subject only to weather. The dates are the evenings of May eighth, ninth, tenth, and eleventh, from eight P M to five A M. The freeway will be closed down, traffic will be detoured through Solidad on Front Street, C H P will be on scene. Traffic signals will be modified so we can keep people moving through town. Uh and there will be wide variety of distribution mechanisms to get people informed of this potential clo- but not potential, this actual closure. What they're doing is they're they're putting uh some kind of polymer sealant on the bridge structure itself. They have to be careful in how we apply it, and they have to give it time to dry. And so they're gonna close the whole mark on freeway for four nights.
Okay, so yeah, let's just make sure that that's uh outreach, that that which is done ahead of time in advance and not just social media, but also other other platforms. Um I know that um I saw staff at the uh masses, the our Lady of Solitude doing distribution of the for the survey for the master plan, for the park's master plan. So being able to connect with some of our local churches and um it um businesses as well. So if they can post it in their place of business too, so that the more people know that this is gonna happen. So people are prepared, and I know we've been waiting for this for a while. Um but I know it's gonna be a mess, and people are not gonna be happy when it does happen, because we're gonna have a lot of traffic. But so the more that we can really just advance notice to our community, uh would be great. Yeah, thank you for that.
And that can go to our.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so um with that, then we'll move on to future agenda items, and I'll start with Councilmember Gavera.
Uh I don't know if for the next agenda, but I would like to see uh um on boarding process, not only for um um committee members, but particularly for uh city councils, because some of us don't know what to do when we get here. So it will be probably a good idea to have something that the new city councils could go over uh along with uh everything that it that that they're supposed to do, they're supposed to learn and and all the things. And maybe not for this this coming agenda about for later on.
Okay. We have that, so that's separate from the league, new council members um training. Okay, Councilmember Chavez?
I don't have anything to say.
Okay, Council uh Councilmember Gavera?
I did.
I'm sorry, uh Councilmember Coralejo?
Um yes. So um yeah, I do just have one agenda item. Um I know the last meeting we had, I had said that I was hoping to get the um Historical Society kinda kinda talk to us about uh the farmers market and how they they select the vendors, and and we could probably talk about outreach uh in reaching out to our Solidad businesses and entrepreneurs. Because there's only one uh Solidad, uh what is it called, Solidad Vendor? And there's not too many there in South County, they're mostly Salinas, Castroville, or Pitas. And I wanna say, I believe that I heard uh in my colleagues uh here on the council kind of, you know, uh being in agreement. And so I would like to see if maybe, um you know, since they're not, it didn't sound like they were willing to come and meet with us. I know we do approve the land use every year. I presented at the farmers market, I'm excited that it's coming, coming back, I believe it's tomorrow. And I was hoping that maybe our our representative, uh council member Cabrera can maybe um, you know, give us a an update on that or a report um on it. And again, it's just uh
For the future.
Yeah, sure. Okay. Thank you. Uh now, uh Mayor for ten?
Uh yes, I have one one item here. Uh I I like to see, you know, we're talking about gun violence, we're talking about your presentation. They were just so we're talking about a town uh town hall meeting uh that we could participate in. And one of the things that I've been trying to get for the last year and a half is a youth violence prevention program off the ground. And so I'm asking, and not for the April meeting, for in May, that we have staff come back with a serious presentation on a youth violence prevention program that is uh uh all-inclusive with all the the items that we're looking for, intervention, um the whole education of uh that whole program. So but so in May meeting, if we can get a new plan, let's see.
Well, at the last meeting, you directed us, we we presented some actual programs, and the council said, oh, off on the programs. We wanna see how we fit into a strategy. We were directed to come back with a comprehensive strategy, and so we can commit that we can do that at the first meeting in May.
Excellent.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for that. Okay, so just a comment, I just would like to have clarification on the role that we have with the oversight with the Historical Society. Um whether we, wha- what is our role, what is their role? Um so that way it's clear in terms of what what we can do and what we can't do. And so for me, it's just two items. I know I talked about establishing a communications policy that will be part of what we've already have in social media. I would like to see that um come back. Um and this is, this is a medium priority, it's not a high priority. And then the other is, um I know you said that we're gonna come back with a proposed legislative platform. I think in the meantime, there is really critical legislation that I think we need, we should be as a council looking at to support or not. So in the interim, you know, this is in May, and it's important, the the session is like ongoing right now, and it's really critical. So if we can have uh letters, I know that I had brought up a few uh letters of support for legislation. If we can have some of those and add in the next council meeting, so at least we can have the council uh discuss that and and approve or not approve, but I I would like to bring that forward. Those are the only two uh items I have. Okay, if there there's no other item of the business, then I adjourn this meeting.
Thank you, thank you, everyone.